Right, with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay. And we look forward as always to receiving your public comments.
Thank you very much. Well done. And so we'll call our meeting to order. Would you please introduce your caring city council?
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Hafa?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Roberson?
And I'm here as well. And we're all here at the chambers. I know that governor is looking at revising his emergency orders. So it may be hybrid meetings may not exist going forward. We'll have to see. So let's have public comments. That allows the public to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda. If you'd like to address the council on an agenda item, we'll give you an opportunity. Just wait until that comes up, please. You have three minutes to share with us. As always, if you need a staff response, you will get it. Go ahead and leave a contact now or offline. And also you can always contact the city at suggest@monterey.org. Suggest@monterey.org. So with that, we would open, we'll start here in the chambers to see if we have a public comment. Well, it's always a pleasure to welcome two former city council people, starting off with Carl Alson.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Alson. And I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the city for allowing me to represent the city in Azerbaijan for urban planning and renewal and reconstruction of area within that country. It was a forum of about 200 delegates from throughout the world. And it was all about planning, architecture, and other things which fall into that. We have a situation after the war with Armenia. And it was about a city called Agdam, which used to be about 144,000 people. And today, nobody's living there. It was completely destroyed during the war. And the 30 years it was occupied by Armenian. So with that, it was, it was all about how to build a new city, carbon free, and also a smart city. And it was about what we all talk about live and work. We want to have an area, downtown area with mixed use buildings and so forth, and suburban area. So far, they have built in that area or that city, they have built a conference center. They built an office for government and they built a school. So the rest of this city is all about smart and carbon free and electric vehicles and so forth. The president welcomed us there and told us a story about the whole thing. And the planners who were there came like from throughout the world, from Indonesia, from Germany, from Austria, from UK, from Poland. So they presented their plans about a smart city. And it was very, very interesting. And that was the first one they ever put on. They're going to build another, probably next year, they're going to have a second conference. And after that, they're going to start building the buildings and they hope by 2025, they're going to be completed. So with that, that was just a briefly thing it was talked about. We would like later to show you a slight podcast about our time there, Nancy and I, about time there. So we will do that later on. It was a 30 hour travel time. So we just got back here Sunday evening. So it's a little bit different timing. So with that, I'll just let Nancy take it over from here about our city system.
Thank you, Carl. Carl, you're the perfect person to take that trip this time because you're a pioneer in mixed use building in our city and helped write the ordinance and have built several projects showing how mixed use works with retail downstairs and housing upstairs. So I'm sure they appreciated you being there too and probably picked your brain somewhat as well. Well, another former city council member, Nancy Selfish, welcome. Still in jet lag?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you for letting us be here today. And Carl forgot to mention that of the 200 people at the conference, we were the only two from the United States. So we were honored to be there. After the conference, we were able to go to our sister city, Lankaran. And we have a special friend there who owns a tea plantation. And before COVID started, he started making this tea to bring to Monterey. We are so close to getting it here. We have to change a little bit on the packaging to make it coincide with our rules and regulations here. But this is Monterey tea. It is a strong black tea. It was made strong because we have a strong relationship. So he is also making a Monterey park that we will talk about with a Monterey lake. And when I went there, I had heard about it, but to see it, it was amazing. And it's coming along and what he has done in just three months in this park is wonderful. So I have a little sample of tea for everyone.
I do, yes.
This is made by Lankaran.
Thank you, Nancy.
And it is
You know, I didn't even notice that.
Thank you, Nancy.
Six more weeks, folks, then my tea will be about.
Within a few months, we're going to have Monterey tea in tea bags because that's the way most Americans drink it. And hopefully we will get it here and it will be sold only in Monterey. Thank you. The reason for the park is every time I go there, I have talked about Denison Menace Park. So this is their, they've never seen our Denison Menace Park, but this is going to be their idea of Monterey, of Denison Menace Park with a restaurant in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And we know you were very instrumental in establishing that city sister, sister city relationship and keeping the friendship association going. So we thank you very much for doing that. Because of our sister cities, for them to survive and be successful, they need a strong local presence. And so we thank you for doing that. Other public comment in the council chambers, please come on up. We'd love to hear from you. Let us know who you are, if you're comfortable doing that, and share your thoughts.
Yeah, too bad you don't have a blow up monitor. I could show you my evidence here, but I'm Steve Lightfoot. I've been living here on and off for maybe 15, 20 years. I'm the guy with the LennonmurderTruth.com van and all the outrageous political billboards you lately noticing on it. I don't look like much, dirty t-shirt, long hair, 68 years old. But I'll either be killed or be the most famous human being on earth someday. The story I have is real. I've got Stephen King getting John Lennon's last autograph. I've got Reagan, the day of the murder under the headline, who's in, who's out? As he sits next to Nixon's book that talks about why we got to kill John Lennon. I cracked the crypto codes and Time and Newsweek and US News Magazine is all about it. I can also prove Nixon had JFK killed. If you want to know the truth of the world we live in, Russia killed JFK. Russia killed John Lennon. Russia killed a lot of our heroes. So what's wrong with Monterey? That they want to sic their police department on me unfairly? Through the whiskey bar club and through Britannia Arms and mechanic spank, phony bogus charges of disturbing the peace, unnecessary noise. It's very stressful when you're as right as rain and you find out a city as pretty as Monterey is corrupt on the inside. I'm talking about Leon Panetta, corrupt, in bed with the communists, no less. Bad influence. Me going through all these conniptions with the law and the courts here that are just totally corrupt. It's paid, I paid a price for it, believe me. But I found out that Leon Panetta is no good. And he is the reason you're rotting from the head down. Now, I'll be going to court for two tickets. I'm fighting a third one with an appeals thing. I'll just be 10 more seconds here. I just want to say to the public, I know you're jealous of me. I've got the biggest story in US history. I know you're afraid of your government. You'd rather sacrifice your children to John Lennon's killer. You've proven that. You're sick. You need a hero. Religion has failed you. If you molest this hero too much, nature and God's wrath will pay you back. Believe me, I could tell you stories. There's something going on in the supernatural realm with me. You don't want to mess with me. Really? I met the guy yesterday who actually saw the same asteroid I saw when I was 12. They're going to Mount Shasta, missed us by 3,000 miles. That fast. That kind of retribution, really? Not alone, let alone the reputation of persecuting the hero with the John Lennon murder evidence. Thank you.
We have other public comment in the chambers? And all right, then let's see. Clementine, do we have anyone? It looks like.
Yes, we do.
Hand raised. So would you go ahead and take care of the online participants for us, please?
Absolutely. If Dario Salgado could, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, city council members. I would like to thank, thank you for this opportunity to allow me to speak to you all this evening. My name is Dario Salgado. I'm a longtime resident of this community. I would like to take a minute and thank our men and women in uniform, police officers and firefighters in this community. As a father of four beautiful children, I would want to acknowledge our town heroes and thank them for their hard work and sacrifice for their continuing to serve this community and to inspiring and to inspire the next generation. I know in personal, my 10 year old daughter, she has been, she met this police officer a couple of weeks ago and just recently, she just told me she was so amazed of meeting this officer that now she wants to become like him. She wants, she wants to be a future police officer. So this, thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
And there are no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then we'll go ahead and close the open public comment section of the meeting. And take a look at the consent items. Any member of the public wanted to pull the consent? Here or online or previously?
In underwear, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any council members wanted to pull anything or have comments about consent?
Yep.
All right. Well, then we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hafa?
Aye.
And Mayor Roberson?
And that's a yes for me as well. Well, that was a quick consent. Then I just looked. Now I know why. It's short. Remember that for the next three meetings, okay, city manager?
We shall, yeah.
Let's go to a public appearance and probably many of you have read in the, in the newspaper, seen on the media and television, et cetera, streaming about the coastal commission wanting wharf outdoor seating. We've received 18. We've received letters from several people wanted to assure the public and members of the wharf, et cetera, that we have all, we have received the letters from everybody. And that led to our talented city manager to agendize this to see if we can get some compromise and consensus and get the coastal commission to kind of take a second look at this and realize that the seating is valuable to our city. So with that, to our talented city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is basically a request to the city council to authorize a letter that will be sent in the name of the mayor and the city council to the coastal commission to continue allowing outdoor seating at least till the end of next year. There's a long history behind outdoor seating and regulations that the coastal commission is implementing or has implemented, but we just feel very strongly right now that right now, it's probably not the right time to enforce the coastal commission. It's a request to have coastal development permits for each outdoor seating place required. And the coastal commission, who has approached us to implement that, has definitely the legal authority to extend that. We feel strongly about that just because of the preference that customers have, even today with the COVID numbers being very, very low right now. People prefer to have al fresco dining, outdoor seating, and our businesses are still challenged on multiple levels. It's not so much the number of customers, but it's also getting personnel, getting supplies, et cetera, and also the rising costs that they see in their day in, day out work there. So it's a, it's an undue hardship. And what we ask the coastal commission to do is basically allow outdoor seating on wharf number one for another 14, 15 months to have it ended by December 31st, 2023. I think it's a very reasonable request. It's a request that is supported by almost every concession on wharf number one. And I feel that we have a real good shot at getting some common sense response back from the coastal commission.
All right, that concludes staff presentation. Any questions this point?
I have a question.
Yes, council member Dan.
Sometimes it's just common sense and good judgment, which neither of this decision is being made by the coastal commission. I'd just like to ask the staff, there's a lot of wharfs up and down the West Coast. Are we being picked on? Are we the only one in the coastal commission has decided that we, we're violating something that should be done and should be changed? Or is it, are we the only ones?
If you follow the January 6th commission interviews, a lot of staff are saying pleading the 5th. In, in this case, it's, it's, it's a thin ice if I say we are targeted by the coastal commission. But we kind of feel that their code enforcement arm is paying special attention to the city of Monterey.
Okay. Go ahead, council member Ed.
Follow a comment and I'll reserve some time for later because I know we're going to have some speakers tonight and welcome that as well. I think that we have an opportunity for some education for explaining to the community the coastal impacts of what the zone is that they can influence. So at a future meeting, maybe we can have a map that's shown that highlights the area so the community can learn a little bit more about the coastal commission's influence. And it's not the entire city, but it is the, you know, the coastline and does not go all the way inland very far in some areas and goes a little further in other areas. So maybe a map to show the coastal zone in the future would be helpful. As I went through the staff report, and I appreciate the timeline and the chronology and the documentation because it really shows to me leaning towards the question that Mr. Albert had was, well, why is the coastal commission doing this? And, and when they gave the initial letter, it was a two week notice, a two week notice to merchants to remove tables and chairs. So to me, that shows an absolute ignorance to process, reasonableness, notice. And then we got an extension and now we've had documentation going back and forth. So I support this effort. I hope that they'll pay attention. I hope that they will listen to those that this most impacts. And there needs to be a change in the attitude and the perspective that the coastal commission staff and their code enforcement efforts to rain down control and influence our city in our, with our tenants that so adversely impacts the entire city. So I support the effort with a letter. I hope it gets their attention. I hope they'll be reasonable. And I know we're talking to the staff and this has not yet got to the agenda of the coastal commission action. So everybody has responsible supervisors and every body that takes action has, they have to be held accountable. And they are accountable ultimately to the residents of California, the residents of the state or the city of Monterey. And I encourage people to pay attention to this and make sure their voice is heard with the coastal commission. Because that's the most effective thing that everybody can do is make sure that the discussion is there and the reasonable solutions are offered.
Thank you, council member Ed. Questions before we go to the public, anything? All right, let's see if there's a public comment on the letter going to the coastal commission with respect to wharf seating. Anyone in the, in the chambers would like to speak to this? All right, seeing none. Do we have anybody? Let's take a look and see if we have any hands raised. Clementine? We have one.
Yes, we do. We have a telephone caller, the last three digits, 500. So please dial star six to unmute telephone caller, last three digits, 500. We have a telephone call. There we go. Thank you.
There we go. Hello, welcome. I'm Wendy Brickman, calling as president of Fisherman's Wharf Association. And I would like to sincerely thank Mayor Roberson and the city council and the staff for their proposed letter to the California Coastal Commission on behalf of extending outdoor dining on Old Fisherman's Wharf until at least December 31st, 2023. Again, at this point in time, we're facing a predicted potential surge in COVID this winter. And many people still feel much more comfortable dining outdoors al fresco than indoors. Plus, everyone enjoys the fresh air on the wharf while eating outside, as well as the ability to bring their dog on a leash to the wharf while they're dining al fresco. It's just a relaxing outing at so many of our restaurants. And removal of the wharf's outdoor seating will negatively impact the city of Monterey, the wharf restaurants, as well as our locals, an estimated 4 million visitors. Restaurants are, as Hunt just indicated, are still struggling with current inflation, a projected recession, very high gas prices, increased cost of food supplies and staffing. And the outdoor dining has really helped allow them to survive. It was, if it was eliminated by the end of this year, it would cause at least a 30 to 40% layoff of wharf restaurant employees and a reduction of sales of approximately 30%. And since the city is the wharf's landlord and a portion of the rent is used to fund tidings projects, as well as police and fire, among other services, we would really like to avoid this scenario. The complexity of applying to the California Coastal Commission for a permit and the cost is also extremely challenging. And we're hoping that the California Coastal Commission could streamline the permit process and ideally lower the cost and risk to the restaurant owner who would apply. We're collecting hundreds and hundreds of signatures from our wharf locals and visitors on a petition who do not want to see the removal of outdoor dining. And again, a big thank you to the city of Monterey for their support. And we would also like the opportunity to meet with you on Fisherman's Wharf for you to get to know our hardworking, family owned business operators. And just as a last note, the positive impact of filming Big Little Lies at Palooka Tertoria with all of its great outdoor dining couldn't have happened without outdoor dining. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
And next we have John Sovereign. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm John Sovereign, a resident of Monterey. And I just wanted to voice my support for this outdoor dining on Fisherman's Wharf. And I'm not that familiar with the history of this program. It seems like the city at one point created temporary outdoor business permits that helped support this. Seems like the city could even do more in communication with the coastal commission, communicating to them all of the permits that were previously granted to these businesses and the process that that was done and how that could be, you know, integrated into the commission's approval process potentially. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Clementine, it doesn't look like.
There are no more requests to speak, Mr. Mayor.
That's it, right? Okay, we'll close public section of the hearing and then return it to the council for action and comments.
Move to approve. Second?
All right.
Just one additional comment. Okay, so thank you for Wendy Brickman calling to, that represents the old Fisherman's Wharf Association. I heard from a reliable source that they started petition gathering a couple of weeks ago and with just a little short time, they've already, they're nearing about fourteen hundred signatures from folks that go to the wharf that are adamantly opposed to the Coastal Commission impacting this. So again, they ask us to extend. I encourage that and I hope that that occurs, but also with the conditions that they understand how onerous their process is and how expensive their process is. And one of the original pieces I read was that they were, the Coastal Commission was actually saying that you're applying, but there's no guarantee you'll get it, and it could be as much as one to two years for the process. So Wendy highlighted on the loss. I concur with those, the pieces of information. So how important this is for the city of Monterey to not lose the outside dining.
Yes, and, and when this first came to light, the Coastal Commission was saying that this outdoor seating was prohibiting people from enjoying the wharf, the views, et cetera. So my wife and I went down, I think Gracie might have been with us, and we just walked the wharf where the seating had been and, and found absolutely no obstructions. And if anything else, it made it more accessible to the public. And that's what the Coastal Commission is all about, is public access to the coast. So it's a head scratcher, to say the least, and a little bit of mission creep. Yep, we don't want to tell them that because. For up to date on what's going on. So with that, we'll have our city manager introduce his terrific community development director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. About a year ago, three hundred sixty-four days, to be precise, we approved our current ADU ordinance and the council at that time said, okay, let's, let's start rolling with this ADU ordinance. It's probably not yet perfect, but we, we got to start with something. I think about seven months or eight months later, we actually improved the ADU ordinance to provide some more clarity. Because we, we anticipated and the council also forecasted that the product that we have in front of us is a great starting point, but we have to continue tinkering and working with it. But you asked us also three hundred sixty-four days ago, come back to us and give us a report. Tell us how, how is it going with the ADUs? Are the ADUs actually something that is being used here, embraced by our community and our property owners? And so tonight, it's an informational report that we put together and that will, that we want to share with you. And with that, I'll ask Kim to continue.
Yeah, and before our terrific community development director starts, we always have to remember the caveat is because of the CDO from the State Water Resources Control Board and the cease and desist order, preventing CalM providing any more hookups, new meters, that any of these units which are being built have to find water credits within their own building or their own use. So one would say, well, that isn't very many units. It's because we've got the water restriction. Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Two key dates that you probably remember, in October of last year, our city council passed the first reading of the ordinance.
There you go.
It was still green, but we'll try again. So in October, the city council passed an ordinance addressing ADUs and JADUs to be consistent with state law. And you probably remember, we fairly quickly came back in April after the Planning Commission was asked to debate in more detail, could we allow more flexibility beyond the state law? And the one issue that ultimately the Planning Commission and City Council was comfortable with was to amend the ADU ordinance to allow twenty-five foot ADUs and multifamily zoning districts if it was above parking with architectural review. And we've had a couple of those projects come forward in the last few months. But, you know, where do the numbers look since two thousand eighteen and really more specifically in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two? You know, we're seeing a total of sixty-two accessory dwelling unit applications. These are ministerial permits to our building departments. So they're compared against our code and based on a checklist and are approved if they meet all of the standards. The only exception to that would be those ADUs that reach up to twenty-five feet in the multifamily zone. So staff's general conclusion, conclusions are, is the housing stock has increased. It's been moderate and the mayor pointed out the number one constraint, and that's water supply. So homeowners or have to work with the water district to re-inventory their water credits on site and be able to squeak out enough water credits to be able to construct the units. But sixty-two units is nothing to laugh about. I mean, it is a significant number for our community. The other good point is ADUs will count towards RENA. They're market rate units. They're not considered very low or low, but they are considered as new units and count towards our RENA. The city has received two public comments on ADUs and those letters are attached to your staff reports. And the, some property owners do not want to record a deed restriction against their property for ADUs. And the deed restriction as written basically reflects a city adopted law that prohibits short-term rental of ADUs and limits the sale of an ADU from the primary unit. So it's informing the current owners and future owners, they, they can't sell the ADU, ADU as a separate unit in our community. I do want to point out, just I believe it was last week, the governor signed new legislation that becomes effective January first. And so I wanted to give you a hint of the amendments that we hope to have in front of you sometime in January, early February. The first is, you probably remember, the existing height limit under state law is sixteen feet for accessory dwelling unit. And the new state law creates more flexibility. It increases the height to eighteen feet for a detached ADU that is within one half mile of a major transit stop for a high-quality transit quarter. It increases the height to eighteen feet for an ADU on a multifamily dwelling unit, for a detached unit. And then for both multifamily and single family, if the ADU is attached to the existing building, you'll be able to increase the height to twenty-five feet. These get a little bit more technical, but I'm just going to mention them to you, just so you know they exist. So construction of an ADU will not constitute an occupancy change under the building code. And I spoke to our building department, you know, when does that occur? When does that occupancy change occur? And it could occur for a multifamily building over three units. You're no longer considered an R three occupancy use. You're considered an R two use at, under today's codes and different regulations would kick in from a building standpoint. As I read the new law, it will no longer trigger that occupancy change. One of the questions that I guess has come up more in other cities than ours, the current law clearly says that if the main house or multifamily building has fire sprinklers, you can require the ADU to have fire sprinklers. If it doesn't, you can't. But what they're doing here is the reverse, is that you cannot require fire sprinklers for the existing building where the ADU is being added. So if you're putting an ADU in a multifamily structure, you can't require the whole building to be retrofitted for sprinklers. And the same for single family. I haven't really heard of this being an issue in our community, but it's probably somewhere because it's being reflected now in state law.
Could I?
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question on the first bullet. I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Is it saying that the occupancy requirement, like requiring the owner occupancy or?
No, this has to do with the, the building code requirements. It's usually based on the number of units. So if you're one or two units or actually one to three units, the requirements are less for building construction types than over three units. So what this is saying is if you have a project with over three units and you add an ADU to it, the city building department's not going to be able to reclass, will no longer be able to reclassify the structure. That's usually a requirement because as more people get into structure, there's more specific building requirements. And so this is not looking at an ADU as an intensification.
The whole idea of, you know, fire sprinklers, when you think about the, the Sierras and the wildfires that we're experiencing, doesn't make sense. And our community may be more so, but if you're thinking, there's your opportunity to really retrofit a lot of buildings. But sometimes these rules come out of Sacramento and they really need to probably tailor them more to a specific community rather than one size fits all. Seems short sighted to me.
And this is a nuance. The law had a allowed or specified that owner occupancy requirements for ADUs were prohibited through twenty twenty-five. And that, I'll say, term limit that the city could have gone after twenty twenty-five and required owner occupancy for an ADU has been removed. So now owner occupancy will no longer, even after twenty twenty-five, be an allowed consideration for a local government.
Now, this would be either in the ADU or the property at large.
Correct.
So in other words, it doesn't have to, the owner doesn't have to be there. So it can, it's a quasi apartment.
You can have two, yes, the both units could be rented. It's different for JADUs. If you have a JADU on your site, there is an owner occupancy requirement. So either the main house or the JADU have to be owner occupied under state law.
Could you explain JADU to the public, please?
So how I like to describe a JADU is it's a smaller unit. What we typically see is conversion of an existing area within the main house. It could be the garage. It could be a bedroom. You're only allowed to add on a hundred and fifty square feet for access into the JADU. So it's very limited. It's meant to be an interior conversion in an existing building. Where ADUs can be an interior conversion, it can be an outbuilding, like an artist's studio, or it can be a brand new structure.
Okay. So can I go back to what you just said on the junior ADUs? So there's a square footage maximum requirement on a junior ADU?
I believe it's five hundred square feet. For AD, ADUs, it's eight hundred, and I believe for JDs, it's five hundred.
Okay, because you said a hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, what I was saying, so there's always the question, well, we need to have a new door or entrance into our JADU. How do we do that if we? And so the code allows you to add on a hundred and fifty square feet to the existing house to provide an entrance into the JADU.
Okay, I, I understand. Thank you.
And that's a great segue into this next requirement. JADUs are unique and that you don't have to provide a separate bathroom when, within the JADU for that household. They can share it with the main residence. And this is clarifying, this has been a little bit unclear, is does the JADU have to have a separate entrance under the new state law? It will. And you also have to provide interior access from the JADU into the main residence. So in some communities, you could approve, let's say you take a garage, you convert it into a JADU. And some people had to go outside the building and through the main house entrance to use the bathroom. So while that was allowed, they're now saying you have to allow an interior connection between the house and the JADU. The last part was really promising to me and I'm really excited to learn more about this. Is that HCD, which is our state agency for housing, will be required to establish and administer a grant program for the construction of ADUs and JADUs. I don't know what that's going to look like yet, but I think that's something that could be very exciting. Other things the council's asked us to consider, and we're going to fold that into the amendment that we're going to be looking at hopefully in January, is you want us to explore incentives linked to affordability? So is there a way that we could deed restrict the JADU or ADU if we provide a financial incentive or some type of incentive? You asked us to remove the extension of owner occupancy requirements. The new law already deletes. You know, after twenty twenty-five, we can't establish an owner occupancy requirement. So I believe that's already been addressed. Remove exceptions for replacement garage parking and carports. So right now, if you put an ADU in a garage, you, you have to replace the parking somewhere on site. It can be a non-covered situation in the, in the driveway. You asked us to look at not requiring that replacement parking or ask the Planning Commission. So we'll be looking at that. You've talked about possibly loosening or reducing the FAR requirements for ADUs. If you remember, ADUs are exempt up to eight hundred square feet, but you can put another bedroom on an ADU up to a maximum of a thousand square feet under our code. So that difference between eight hundred and a thousand would be subtracted from the onsite FAR under today's laws. And the question is, should we just eliminate all of those requirements or not?
And can you say what the FAR again is for the?
Sure. So floor area ratio is the square footage. I like to describe it of all livable space on the first and second floor. You have a gross square footage number and it's a percentage of the lot. So for example, most of our single family areas have a forty percent floor area ratio. So if you have a five thousand square foot lot, forty percent, which I believe is two thousand square feet, is the maximum amount of livable area you can have on the lot. The last item is the, to allow ADUs within existing commercial or mixed-use buildings. This is already allowed as long as those structures are allowed to have residential uses. The only area where I can think that doesn't apply right now would be like in our C three district with our heavier automotive uses along Del Monte Avenue. So I think we've pretty much addressed this issue already, but we'll make sure the Planning Commission thinks about it a little bit more.
You also had the governor just sign new legislation forbidding any local jurisdictions from limiting residential and commercial. In other words, opened up commercial to residential statewide unless I read it in print.
There are a lot of new state laws.
Right, so that one probably is, is going to be moot anyway. And I'm not, it actually makes some sense when you look at all the empty commercial space and the need for housing. But the Planning Commission will probably have that law as well, and that will impact that last bullet.
As I wrap up here, our only goal this afternoon was for you to accept this presentation. No further actions required. We just wanted to also give you a heads up about what the Planning Commission will hopefully be debating in December. And I, I hope we wrap that up. So at your second meeting in January or early February, we're in front of you with the revised amendments.
Did you want to expand on the deed restriction issue or do you want to wait till after public comment?
Well, I tried to address. Well, I tried to address that issue. And I know Nelson Vega is here, who is one of the two authors of the letters concerned about this. There is, at least from two members of the public, a request to not require a deed restriction to be reported against the property. As shown on this slide, the slide, the deed restriction currently prohibits the short term rental of the ADU and limits the sale of the ADU from the primary unit. So when someone purchases purchases a property, they realize they can't sell the ADU separately from the main house. From cities perspective, it serves as a notice to future owners of the use of the property consistent with city regulations. The other viewpoint of that is, well, that's already existing city law. And, you know, requiring a deed restriction is more administrative processes and restrictions against their property than they would like.
The part I I thank you for reminding us of that, but I was. Was it in SB nine? I'm sorry if I missed that, that SB nine addressed deed restrictions one way or another?
It specifically addresses deed restrictions for JDUs and it's a different legislation number. But the ADU law specifically addresses ADUs and says the government agency shall file a deed restriction. The state law on ADUs is silent on the issue of whether or not to require the deed restriction.
On?
On ADUs only JDUs, it's required under state law.
Okay. Do you know if there's a general practice? That's that's not a fair question. Maybe what what other jurisdictions out there is a pretty common practice? Do you have restrictions on both or not?
I I can go ahead and answer that if Kim's okay with it. But anyway, if you piece together the state laws, it's a legal practice to impose a deed restriction on regular ADUs as opposed to just the junior ADUs where it is expressly mandated. In a ministerial approval, then one way to think of it is a lot of approvals that the planning commissioner, maybe the city council authorizes in a use permit is conditional and it would have requirements such as you will not rent this out as a short term rental, you will not sell it separately from the main unit. And since we're not going through a conditional process, it's ministerial and pre-approved. In the code, it states that you will record a deed restriction, putting the world on notice that these restrictions are in place. That restriction stays with the property from owner after owner after owner unless it's subsequently removed. And same with the conditional use permit. City codes may change all the time. And so there may be a general rule in the city that says short term rentals are allowed. But maybe that's not the intent we want for this particular property. So if the intent is to protect the housing stock from short term rentals and from potential resales, this is the most secure way to protect that interest. So this is a policy decision that you can revisit. There's no mandate that there be a deed restriction for regular accessory dwelling units, but that has been staff's recommendation. And 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 one last point to answer the mayor's second question, which was, is it a common practice? I will note that the Department of Housing and Community Development does have model ordinances. And Berkeley is listed as one of the premier accessory dwelling unit cities and their ordinances recognized as such. And they similarly require deed restrictions like Monterey does. So it's it's out there.
I'm sorry, Dan, if you mind this, go ahead just quickly. So if the council wanted to discuss or take any action on deed restrictions, then that would be a subsequent meeting because it's not agendized. This is just a presentation.
This is just a presentation and it's one of the many policy points that the planning commission will be taking up in December, like Kim mentioned, to address the new laws and also the list that she showed on the last slide there, second to last slide there of policy considerations. Deed restriction on accessory dwelling units is lawful when you piece together the the rules. But whether you want to require it as a policy is a point that can come back to you too.
Right, just if the when the public speaks, we would just remind them that this is going to go through process and they'll probably want to be attending planning commission meetings and future council meetings. Thank you, Dan. Sorry, go please.
She answered my question.
Very good. Any other questions, Councilmember Tyler?
So so the the deed restriction isn't really helpful unless we have a circumstance where, let's say we lift the ban on short term rentals, then this policy would have some kind of effect.
I would say it also has other enforcement tools that are available to enforce a deed restriction as opposed to the city as a enforcing its city code. It gives more avenues to ensure compliance.
Okay.
Other remedies.
Okay.
So if it is rented out as a short term rental, you might be able to prove a violation of a deed restriction separate and apart from a city code violation.
Okay. And then I have another question. Could the policy be broken up and just specifically speak to the restriction around short term rentals and not speak to separating them out, selling it as a separate unit? And isn't isn't there a process in place if the property owner wants to do that to separate the lot? How does that work?
So I'd have to go back and look, there's been so many different changes in the law, but I think there is more flexibility now in lot splitting. And then you could sell each unit separately. And so again, that comes down to the policy choice of the city council. Do you want to ensure that that does not happen? Or do you want to allow that to happen on a maybe an undersized substandard lot?
I guess part of what I'm thinking is if if a property owner wanted to do that by creating the the deed restriction, are we preventing them from being able to do that through other means that the city might allow that under typical normal circumstances?
Yes, so if 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 there's a deed restriction in place, they couldn't apply to the city to sell or, you know, yes, it gives extra protection, not just for the policy interests of the city, but for potential purchasers, renters, buyers, whatever.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, again, that this will all be going through process, planning commission, and ultimately back to the council. Good discussion. Anyone else questions? All right, let's open it up to public. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I I wanted to go back and clarify something I heard from the city attorney as well as the planning director. Under the HDC rules and the ADU laws that have come through from the state of California, are we currently required to do a deed restriction? Because I thought I heard you say that the language was shall create a deed restriction.
Right, for the junior accessory dwelling units.
For junior.
It's a mandate.
Okay.
And it's optional for regular, I'll call it, accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
So JDUs, you must have one under state law. State law allows cities to mandate it one one under a city code for regular JD, regular ADUs.
Okay, so a junior ADU, ADU is part of the footprint and under the same roof or attached to the structure.
Right.
But it's interesting that there shall is attached to a junior ADU where obviously you couldn't split off something because it's under the same structure and it's attached. So the deed restrictions required for that. But there's no deed restriction required from the state of California under the ADU law for a separate structure called an ADU. And right?
So but also remember, ADUs can be within existing houses. They can be within a house, they can be attached to a house, they can be freestanding and allow any conversion of any structure on the site. So it an ADU can look exactly like a JDU with the exception that a JDU does not have to have separate sanitation facilities. So people are struggling with water credits.
So that's the only difference.
That's the most significant, yeah, that's, I mean, but ADUs can be separate. JDUs have to be inside, ADUs can be inside.
Right, and it all boils down to the bathroom or water credits. Yeah.
And yeah, and it just, I'm just struck by the differences between the deed restriction for one and no deed restriction required for the other.
Yeah.
And is it in keeping with what was occurring with SB nine? Or was it SB ten, the lot split?
So yeah, so SB nine and we're going to be bringing forward, we're just working on our checklist. We had our first SB nine project and we're going to start debating that at the planning commission level because we learned a lot through this one application. So SB nine allows you to build a second unit on an existing single family lot. That's allowed, so you can have basically a duplex on a single family lot. It also allows you to even take substandard lots, subdivide them and have a total of four units. So subdivide it traditionally down the middle and you could have two on this property and two on this property. The reason why we're not seeing this in Monterey is because we don't have water right now.
Okay, another question. Just throw in my editorial again. Thank you, the state of California for getting involved in our land juice and doesn't help us. Just my editorial.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan, another question?
I I don't mean to go back, Kim, but I do have a question on transportation. I I understand the transportation hub and building and and building affordable housing around this transportation hub. But what what is the definition at the state level or transportation stop or hub or quality? Does that mean our downtown? Our downtown transit center is considered one of those hubs or what is a transit hub? Do we have one?
No, we do. And it's it's typically defined one of a couple ways. First is a facility, clearly our downtown bus station qualifies as a high quality transit stop. There are also high quality transit areas and that's with typically with 15 minute headways or less. And for us, I believe North Fremont Street qualifies. The city put in the preventive, so the buses can go faster through the intersections with the preemptive control. And our goal is, if you look on, we have Lighthouse Avenue attached to the downtown to North Fremont Street and those areas, those transit lines connect our sustainable community strategy, which is the idea to do infill development within high quality transit areas, which is encouraged and required by the state of California.
So the Surf Project in Marina through Seaside.
Will definitely.
That will definitely be the beginning and the end will definitely be a transit.
Yeah, so in our city, it's the Jazz Line.
Yeah, but it but it's not just any bus stop.
No, it's not.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
All right. Excellent questions. Our community developer director and the planning commissioner are going to roll up their sleeves and then life is interesting. It's going to be fascinating to see how it all comes back to you. So we have public comment here. Folks who've listened and we invite you to share your thoughts. Always, I haven't seen you in a while, sir, at one of our meetings. Good to see you.
Mayor, Mayor. Can I take a thought?
Yeah, that way we can see you and hear you. You're not too close to anybody. Yes or no?
Yes, Vice Mayor approved it.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, my name is Nelson Vega. And I I stand up to say that I don't think you guys have the power to put a deed restriction based on this reading of this document here. And the document says basically, this is actually what was given to me by the.
Nelson, talk into the microphone, please.
It was given to me by the planning department and it says here that except except otherwise provided.
Microphone, please.
The permitting agency shall either approve or deny the application to create an accessory dwelling unit. Within 60 days from the date of the local agency to complete the application. In the permit process, I'm sorry, I grabbed the wrong. The exist, an existing ordinance governing the creation of an accessory dwelling unit by a local agency or an accessory dwelling ordinance adopted by a local agency shall provide for an approval process that includes only ministerial provisions for their approval of accessory dwelling units. That's the approval of what's going to go on the dwelling unit and shall not include any discretionary processes, provisions or requirements for these units except as otherwise provided in this subdivision. A deed restriction is never mentioned except in a JDU. And the reason being is because most junior ADUs are small units that are inside someone's unit and they're different. They are different than an ADU. I'm in the process of I went through the process on on Larkin. I have four or five that I'm going to try to get over on three of them on David Avenue. I have another property that I can put two and I won't put anything if I have to have a deed restriction that that will compromise the financing of the property. What I explained to the city manager, and I don't know if he could grasp the concept at the time, is that when you have a deed restriction, it has a priority. When it has a priority, that means when I go to refinance it, it goes from third, fourth, fifth position and it drops down and drops down and drops down. It could be actually one day in first position and a lender may not like these deed restrictions. Say, you know something, these are really onerous. And they keep saying that, you know, it's only two things here, no separate sale and no short term rental. But they've got a bunch of other things that here additional.
May I have a minute?
Yeah. Cooperation required. The property owner agrees to fully cooperate with the city and property providing all the information requested by the city to assist city in monitoring the properties. But it doesn't tell you what? Is it my tax returns? Is it the tenant's information? It it says I have to do everything. This is wrong. The the enforcement mechanism, any violation of this decision shall result in imposition of fines. That means that fine goes on your property. If you have to sell, you're going to pay the, you're going to pay the fine whether you're in in what in in if you have got gone to court or not. This this could come back to some lenders and haunt them. And the irony of it, if it goes through foreclosure, it gets wiped out. You already have, you already have a city ordinance for this. There's a process for it. And it's discouraging owners like me in providing housing, which is that the whole emphasis of this whole project is to provide housing. And I have six units, which is about 10% of that, 60 for the last four years that won't be built. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Nelson. And again, be sure to share these, you have shared the documents and be sure to speak at the planning commission and when these and when this comes back for a decision making, come on up. Like to hear from you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Rich Aiello and I would like to quickly comment on the proposed ADU deed restriction requirement as well, even though I provided a letter. First, I want to acknowledge, truly acknowledge that our planning department staff is working with a new concept. We understand that and it does take time to refine city ordinances and processes to best meet, you know, the need of the community and the intent of the newly formed California Government Code on ADUs. I just want to share my perspective, however. I started the process in 2020 when the city first adopted the state ADU ordinance. I followed every single recommendation made by the planning department, including waiting for the city to formally approve an ADU ordinance that would allow for a 25 foot height limit over garages in a multifamily R three zone. After having story poles installed and after being on the ARC agenda this last January, I learned at that time that the new city code, the one that they drafted for the height allowance would not allow for the ADU above 16 feet, even though it was recommended to me to wait for the approval rather than going and applying for a variance. I again waited for several months for the ADU ordinance to be revised and to allow for the height that I was looking for. Now, after two years and now that I have submitted my plans to plan check, I learn about the deed restriction. You know, I got to share, it's kind of funny. On September 26, I attended the Monterey Chamber Leadership Luncheon, which included several dignitaries, including local mayors and supervisors. In fact, Jimmy Panetta was also present. Councilmember Smith represented the city of Monterey. And it was amazing to me to hear how all the conversation was was centered around the housing shortage. Incredible. Everybody had the same topic to 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 share. Last couple of weeks, I attended an event at the Marriott where Councilmember Williamson and Albert talked about what they would do if elected as mayor. Great event, again, centered on housing. You know, I find it, I You know, I find it ironic that everyone agrees that we have a housing shortage, but we can't seem to find easy ways to increase the housing stock. Building ADUs is our chance right now to increase that housing supply and we should support property owners with simple processes that encourage development. The deed restriction is centered around rules that already exist, that we are ready comply with, that we're bound to. These rules are already here and we comply with them. There must be another way to enforce compliance and understanding of the regulations without requiring a deed restriction. I find the deed restriction requirement to be another hurdle in the process that truly works against the intent of the state legislature ADU policies. With that said, I respectfully ask that you see the property owner's perspective. Why cloud my property's title when other cities aren't requiring it? Seaside, Marina, Salinas, we talked about Berkeley. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Sorry about that red buzzer and the, again, encourage that work with staff, go to the planning commission and hammer out the details because we can't do that tonight since it's not on the agenda. Anyone else here? I don't see anyone and I don't see any hands raised online, Clementine.
No, no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then back to the council, uh, since it's just to receive a report, any comments? I know probably closed session isn't going to happen at this point, but we can do that this evening, we hope. Final comments?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around the process of, and I understand that the timelines with Mr. Ayalo and appreciate what he's had to go through. And I'm just wondering. There's no copy of the deed restriction that is a pat, attached to this.
Right.
Council package, so I can't refer to it. But I'm just, just wondering if we've got applicants that are ready to go now. Um, and they, and they've been trying, they've submitted their plans a long time ago. Um, isn't there a way to, to get them moving and get them approved so that we can get those at least under construction rather than having applicants have to wait to January to finalize something? So maybe I can't get an answer tonight, but I'm just trying to figure out, well, how, how can we? We accommodate the ones that are ready to start building now rather than having to wait and wait and wait? So.
Would you be able to answer that for Kim or not, or you want to get back?
No, I, I, I think I can, I mean, so we have only two ADUs right now where um, property owners are not wanting to sign the deed restriction. So the vast majority of them are being recorded and people are building their units. If we're going to change the policy to not require a deed restriction for an ADU, we have to change the city code because we put that in the city code. So those, the two properties that are currently impacted will be impacted until we can amend the code in January with thirty days. It'll be January, February timeframe at the earliest.
But, but here's the thing with the mayor, uh, so, so you have the overwhelming, uh, property owners who have not a problem with deed restrictions. And I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Vega's, um, sentiment that, that, that I had to learn about this and, and really I had to learn about this. But what, what is being, uh, described here as putting a cloud on the title is just in, in the opinion of those two property owners. Uh, so when you look, when you talk to banks, banks, when you talk to all the other multifamily housing unit property owners, they don't see this as a cloud on their title. Uh, and, and okay, uh, that might be something that Mr. Vega feels and Mr. Ayala feels is a cloud on the title. But again, it's a policy decision, as we pointed out early on. Does the council want to protect the housing inventory in perpetuity and make it part of the title? Do you want to make sure that those housing units stay in the inventory? And don't become available for short term? Uh, um, rentals. So, uh, again, we will bring this forward as the mayor said in, in January, February. And again, the council's policy is, is affordable housing and leaving the, uh, making sure that we are fixing loopholes. And that's what, what, what we are trying to do. And that's probably what, what leads to, to some frustrations by, by Mr. Vega, Mr. Ayala, because, uh, putting it on the title fixes a loophole, but it doesn't put a cloud on the title. It still allows them to go to every lender and, and get the loans that they need.
All right.
Um, so just a, one, one piece of that I think is maybe not tonight, but it's an opportunity. It seems like there's the third element of the deed restriction. Uh, maybe there's something in there that needs to be recorded accurately, that it's the question of, well, we understand ADUs, no go. We understand you can't subdivide it, no go. There's the third piece that was, I heard Mr. Vega talk about. Uh, is the, well, what if the city wanted to do this or look at records or is, is the city after trying to look at tax records? And I don't think they are, but maybe that deed restriction needs some clarification in the language that helps applicants in the future understand that we're not after anything else except for we have the regulatory authority through the policing of the charter to respond to a complaint through code enforcement if we had to. But I read the deed restriction document one time and I was struck with some of the ambiguous language on that third point. So I, I just think that that needs some help.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good guidance for our community development director staff as it goes to the planning commission. Any other comments? Yes, please.
Yeah, I wanted to, um, thank and express my appreciation to the property owners of the sixty-two, uh, units that have been built. Really appreciate you wanting to be a part of the solution. Um, as for looking at the deed restriction, uh, maybe the point Ed bright brought up, you know, if the city attorney thinks that merits, then I'd be interested in, but I'm not interested in lifting the deed restriction for um, the, the short-term rental or, or splitting the property. And I, um, heard the city attorney indicate that that gives us greater protection in terms of enforcement. And enforcement has been an issue. It's a challenge. It's costly. And, um, and so I'm not interested in that part of it.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Anyone else? All right. So I think, uh, obviously we're not going to be able to get to closed session. Do you have a final comment? On this topic?
Yes.
Oh, please.
Um, so there were some other elements associated with the staff presentation. And I just wanted to be able to speak to at least one of them. Um, the first one was exploring incentives linked to affordability. And so I just, I, I'm interested in seeing how that progresses and moves forward. I'm not sure if you were, if the direction tonight determines whether or not we're moving forward on some of these. So I just kind of wanted to speak in favor of what the possibility looks like in that space. And then the parking requirements. You know, I think if we can look at the circumstances that exist that would prevent individuals from developing ADUs um, because of the limitations around creating an additional parking space. I, I just would be interested in seeing that a little bit more to determine the circumstances around um, how we would be potentially prioritizing vehicles over people. Um, and then there was the discussion earlier around the loosening of floor area ratios. And I think that that's also a really good methodology to, um, allow increased opportunities for ADUs to be developed within the city of Monterey.
Okay, thank you. So all the council comments will be shared with the planning commission. Obviously, when it comes back, you still have to have an open mind. But it's good to give the direction and the thoughts that we did this evening. That was an interesting sound. All right, with that.
Sorry.
Well, we'll take, uh, we will, uh, recess until seven o'clock and thank you, everybody. As always, very interesting, stimulating discussions.
I'm looking.
We're going to count down five, four, three, two, one.
Recording in progress.
All right, so we recessed at 5:30. We're reconvening for our evening session and the first thing, very important is for you all to join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those watching online will see a screen and those here can join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is continued public comments, which just allows people in the public to address the city council on anything not on the agenda. If you'd like to talk about agenda items, just wait. And meanwhile, within the jurisdiction of the city, please, and you will get an appropriate staff contact if you leave a contact with us. You'd prefer doing that offline, that is fine too, and can absolutely guarantee that our magnificent staff will get back to you if you have anything that needs following up, but be sure we know how to reach you. You can always reach the city at suggest@monterey.org as well. There's a three-minute time limit. If you spoke this afternoon, then you used your time and there's only one public comment per person per meeting. With that, anyone here in the chambers who wanted to address the council on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none, then how are we looking? Clementine on people who are watching us.
Yes, we do have a few. First, let's hear from, um, let me get back to our list. Esther Malkin.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to bring to your attention that Laguna Grande Park had a significant issue that happened, an event last week that was over the course of two days. There was a significant presence from the sheriff's department, including their dive team that was here for at least 10 hours. And it was a result of some screaming that went on overnight and then supposedly some sort of suspicious dumping that took place into the water in the park. And this is another example of how things that are going on in the park that affect our residents, while whatever the process continues to be delayed on everything that's been trying to get addressed with this park are just not acceptable. There was a gigantic amount of resources that went to that one incident, including from seaside police and Monterey. The sheriff's department were the main agency that were there. But this happened again right behind some people's homes. And those very same homes have reported that there's at least one woman that's having sex regularly right along their fences in the backyards, right where the soccer field is. This is unacceptable and all of this delaying and all of this ongoing wait and see and all of these other things that continue to be asked of residents' patience is really pushing the limit after we've been trying to get this handled. And while this ongoing extension happens, we still have incidents here. So I don't know what it's going to take for us to finally get this job going. And hopefully it will happen before we have a real liability issue and another home doesn't get broken into while people are home as we had an incident in the past. And maybe that will speed this up. But you know, the three entities that are involved in the JPA continue to not set meetings at the, every meeting when the following meeting is going to be and everybody is just in wait and see mode. And that's just not acceptable to the residents that are dealing with this over here. So I'm not saying that it's any one person's problem here. So I'm not saying that oh, I'm sorry, I got some feedback there. I'm not saying that any one person or staff member is to blame, but we just have to make this happen already after all these years. Thank you.
And our next speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 705. Go ahead, please. You'll need to dial star six to unmute.
Hello?
Go ahead, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I want to read to you a letter from George W. Bush sent to me July 17, 2001 about our environment. He said, "I appreciate your perspective and concern for the environment. I believe that Americans share a duty to be good stewards of the earth. We are called not only to use nature's gifts, but to use them wisely. This means taking individual responsibility as well as collective responsibility. Every American must help ensure cleaner air and water and help preserve our forests, nationwide parks, and wildlife refugees. Our prosperity as a nation will mean little if we leave a world of polluted air, toxic waste, and vanishing forests for future generations. I see a lot of Americans driving in huge gas guzzling cars. I see the majority of Americans eating an animal-based diet which is destroying our forest, our wildlife, and our sea life. I hear the majority of Americans complaining their government isn't doing enough while they aren't doing enough. Our mass transit systems are a shambles while talk of going in the direction of electric vehicles placates the auto industry to build more cars, more mining of toxic batteries in sea and land. I hear the lies that nuclear power is a green technology while Fukushima is still in meltdown and contaminating the Pacific with thousands of tons of seawater daily to try and keep it somewhat in control. I see loved ones dying of the nuclear cancers we were years ago if we went nuclear. Now the military wants to come here as a military site promising money to you with unlimited use of water and resources, whatever reason it deems. This will make us a military target, pollute and scream our skies with the overwhelming roar of their jets so deafening we must plug our ears. Please, dear city fathers, you can say no to this military and tell it where to go where so many bases are now closed and away from habitation. By saying no to this vast, unregulated, vague-regulated project, you will be doing your part for our planet and your children. Thank you."
All right, and then next we have a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine zero two.
My name is Nina Beatty. First of all, I wanted to comment on yesterday's meeting of the, on the compatible youth study. It was the first legally noticed meeting that's been held on this after approximately two years since you approved the contract for the consultant. It was, there was a meeting in June. It was not legally noticed. And it was held at 5:00 PM when most people are working. So, and there will be a meeting tomorrow night also at 5:00 PM when most people are working on the South County portion of this compatible youth study, which is a military study. The study has violated the RFP that you approved. The website, the study, and the committee members are secret and they have not been, for the public, they haven't been informed until the Herald article today, which was the first real information, but it was too late for yesterday's meeting. There's been no accountability from the council for this project. And the report, which was supposed to be finalized before now and released and approved purportedly by you, won't be coming out until after the election. So again, no accountability. The public doesn't get any response from the city council on this and no one is reining in this project. Only 12 people attended the meeting yesterday. Only 17 people responded to the questionnaire because they didn't know it exists. And the study focuses on benefits. Benefits from the military to this community. Benefits to the, from the military to this community supposedly. But the water damage that's been done to, by the military, to this community that may never be solved to the drinking water for this community, that's not being addressed. The ocean damage, the wildlife damage that's happened from military facilities, some of it not even, the military has not even been willing to investigate any of it. None of this has been adequately addressed, some of it, none at all in the study. So it's not a real objective study. Your director of community development said that this is being moved forward and she looks forward to it being moved forward. So it really doesn't matter what the community has to say, this is all about promoting military activities, increased military activities in the Monterey Peninsula and Monterey County areas with known impacts that are being, that the study is refusing to deal with and the public being excluded. So I, I, I stand here virtually before you saying what is the city council going to do about this study, I submitted 16 pages of comments earlier this year and none of them were addressed. And most of it was the lack of transparency and the lack of compliance with simple things like the Brown Act and the RFP, this is out of compliance and the study must be stopped so this public can weigh in on this issue.
And there are no further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I'll close the public comments. No announcements from closed session because we didn't get to it. Public appearance. We're going to go right ahead and get started and item six is to receive an update on unfunded liability pension obligation strategies, I think I can speak for the council and say we're very pleased to see this on our agenda because we've been talking about this for years. Because if you just think it wasn't too long ago that we had a 30% cut to our general fund when we were sheltering in place and a lot of facilities were being closed and then we have been through a fiscal crisis, we're doing better now. So we're happy about that, but a lot of it's one-time money, so our staff very wisely is thinking you can't commit this money over a long period of time because it's not going to be there. So it's always, you have to be very careful with one-time money. And I know infrastructure has been very important to the council, you think about our tunnel, our parking garages, our sports center and our community centers, library, parks, our forests. We have a lot of infrastructure and frankly, a lot of the buildings are aging. And with wildfires and all of the challenges that we're facing, there are just a lot of fiscal challenges which our city is facing. And then includes the harbor, wharves, sea level rise. So there's just an awful lot going on, but one of the things this council is very concerned about was the purse liability and what can we do to make sure when the time comes when everyone is retired that there is enough money to pay the pensions? Because if we don't have the money and it's going to come out of all of the other operations, not to mention all the staffing that we have. So it's very important to address this. So with that, we will go back to our talented city manager, Ansu Sla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we, you framed the topic very well, we have been talking about this for many, many years and we made it part of our fiscal health planning that we started, launched in 2018 and we hit a major bump in the road as you described it in 2020 when our revenues significantly declined because of the shutdown of mainly the hospitality industry with losses for the city's general fund exceeding $30 million. So we hit the bump in the road, but when we started to recover, we dusted off a part of the plans and part of the strategic initiatives that we wrote down in the fiscal health response plan. As you know, the council has created several significant reserves that are benefiting us, we created for the first time reserves for the sports center and the conference center. We created a climate change reserve to deal with sea level rise by using part of our tight end funds for that fund. We filled back up our, our fund for economic uncertainty. We created a technology reserve in acknowledgement that our IT infrastructure is very expensive to replace and we used quite a bit of it during this fiscal year with the measures that are exceeding more than $2 million to upgrade our IT infrastructure without even buying anything excitingly new, just replacing servers. And we started last year by putting a million dollars aside into the pension reserve fund. We put it basically in a savings account, not knowing quite well yet how do we want to allocate and where do we want to allocate that funding to? And as part of this fiscal year's budget, 2022, 2023, we put another million dollars aside for a total of $2 million. You may recall that we met in, earlier this year with one of the star presenters up and down the coastline in the state of California, Mr. Bartels, to talk about our culprits obligations and show you a breakdown where those obligations are between miscellaneous employees and public safety employees and the funding strategies. And at that time, we proposed to use something what the, the state law allows on our section 115, another alternative pension reserve fund that could be used in time of need to help channel money back into culprits and to our normal pension funds. And we presented all the data to you and council was interested to say, well, come back to us, brief us, what, what, what do you recommend to staff and how do you want us to proceed? So tonight, our finance director, Raffella King, will present to you our suggested course of action which, which includes using a section 115 fund. We have $2 million allocated to that, we will also propose as part of that section 115 fund creation and other, an amendment to our fiscal policies to add to that also a pension funding strategies. But nevertheless, I think we are from 2018 to 2022, it's just barely four years, but it feels like we are light years ahead where we were in 2018 when we looked at our overall funding policies and our funding reserves that we had in place and we went through the deep valley of the layoffs that we had to initiate in 2020, so we are in a relatively good position. And I will ask Raffella now to take over and present what we think is probably a good alternative funding strategy to help give future councils breathing room when they are confronted with culprits challenges and with that, Raffella, take it away, please.
Thank you, Hans. Good evening, mayor, council members, I just want to say first of all, thank you because I always love when the mayor in Hans goes first because they kind of teed it up for me, so it gave me most of my agenda, so we'll just go ahead and get started, I want to make sure everyone can see my screen first. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about the funded liability pension or strategies and then approval of the pension oped liability reserve policy. Okay, so first, the city of Monterey, our unfunded accrued liability, UAL, and then our other post-employment retirement benefits, OPEB, reached over 170 million as presented, when we presented it in the spring as a June 30, 2021 valuation date. So the UAL and OPEB activities that continue to fluctuate every year and those fluctuations are dependent upon the number of active employees, the number of retirees, the health insurance costs and the fluctuation of the market, which you'll see a little bit more. So the fiscal responsible, physically responsible action is for city council to address the city's unfunded pensions and OPEB liabilities through what we term as the section 115 trust. I just wanted to give you a status of where we were as of June 30, 2020. So if you just look at, pay attention to the middle columns, the valuation dates as of June 30, 2019 and June 30, 2020, the liability that we actually have, this is for the miscellaneous and safety groups and OPEB, everything combined, was 490.9 million in 2019 and then it rose by 3.4% in 2020 to 507 million. The assets we had on hand was 325 in 1934, again, that's rising 2.6%. And as you can see that our liabilities are rising quicker than our assets, so which makes our unfunded liability as of 19, there was 165 million and then as of 2020, it was 173.6 million. Again, that's a sharp increase, it's 5% increase. So our funded ratio, and this is the part that we look at and we say, how much have we spent or how much do we have set aside to cover these expenses? These liabilities, so as of June, we have 66.3% and then that number went down by 28% as of June 30, 2020 to 65.8%. So what this means that our employer contribution amounts will also go up, so in 2021, we paid 18.7 million for the for our liabilities, 2022, we paid 20.5 million and we are projected as a, from CalPERS reporting that by the time we get to fiscal year 27, 28, then we will be paying 24.7 million just for our pension liabilities. And that is a change of 20.2%. So it continues to rise and one of the things I want to point out with this fluctuation, the things that you can't really count on, so I'm looking now, we just received updated information within the last month or so about what our unfunded liability is now as of June 30, 2021. And remember that our liabilities are funding, our resources are, actual reports goes back at least a year, it's always lax, about a year or two. So as of June 30, 2021, and these are all our groups come individually, but what I want to start with paying attention to is the funded ratio, which is the last line, row five. So our miscellaneous group is 75.7% funded. The safety, 73.7% funded, you can see that our Pepper safety options, they are both are over 100% funded, so they're fully funded. However, I do want you to pay attention also note that this is a point in time. As you know, that as of June, the total unfunded accrued liability for all four groups comes to about 141 million, which is great considering in 2020 was 170. However, this is 2020, 21, we all know that the market has done a deep dive in 2022. So by the time we get our numbers next year, we will see that this number will pretty much self-correct again, so this is what I'm talking about, the market being, is part of, major part of the fluctuation, how our under liabilities show up. So just moving over to the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits, all of this is our retiree healthcare. In 2018, we had unfunded liability of 9.3 million, 2019, 9 million and 2020, 8.4. Yes, that's numbers going down again, it looks really good. However, if you just look at the funding ratio, we're only 23% funded in 2018 and if we get even to 2020 with 37% funded, we still have 70%, you know, 64% to get to, so we still have a lot of work to do. And then every year again, those numbers goes up, as you know, the health insurance costs, those also go up, so we just want to know, so these are what we're looking at now and where our numbers are continuing to be in flux. So let's move on to what we have done, so Hans mentioned this earlier. In 2018, we did launch the city's fiscal health response plan, which emphasized on the need to to implement strategies of not only balance the city's checkbook, but also to solve long-term funding needs, which includes citywide, but right now, we're only going to focus on the, on the pensions. So we've also received the updated presentation from Bartel Associates in March. And again, that confirmed that we were in excess of 170 million in unfunded liability as of June 30, 2021. Since then, we created a pension reserve fund, so we got the initial funding of a million dollars in FY21, 22. We've also allocated, allocated an additional million for this fiscal year, FY22, 23. Like Hans said, we have 2 million that are sitting there waiting to be invested for us. And then since then, we've also, staff has put in time doing research for pre-funding options and to bring back with the benefits of having a section 115 trust. So some funding strategies we want to talk about really for some things that we can do, like using one-time money, one-time payments. The mayor has spoke of this, having, using one-time money not to do ongoing things, so some of the things establishing a hierarchy or plan of allocations, for example, we got in a one-time funding source of 900,000, spending a third on unfunded pensions, a third on one-time projects, like some of the infrastructure needs that we have, another third on replacement of the reserves. So that would be a good use of using one-time payments. We also have a strategy of making direct payments to CalPERS, so those are irrevocable decisions. And with those, you can request a shorter amortization period or you can use the additional discretionary payment. There's also, what we're looking at is establishing the irrevocable supplemental section 115 trust. So contributions for this can only be used for pension and OPEB liabilities, but the investments are less restrictive than the city investment funds, which actually gives you an opportunity to make more in the market. And then also, as part of the funding strategy, we also put in here establishing the pension reserve funding policy. We already have the pension fund, but now we want to see how we actually fund and make it an annual funding source that we don't forget, so we make that part of our budgeting process. So just to show you how the parse is an IRS-approved section trust, so how it would work is so there will be two separate funds. There's one that's pre-funded for OPEB, which are the medical retiree benefits and the assets can be used to reimburse the agency or to pay the benefits providers. And then you also have the pre-funded for the pension. So for that, you can, the pension rate stabilization programs, the assets can be used to reimburse the agency or pay directly to CalPERS. So the stabilization part would come into, like we talked about earlier, how by the 27, 28 fiscal year that it would get to 24 million as far as the money's coming out, but this can actually, we start putting money away, if that's a lean year for us, instead of putting that extra, you have the opportunity to go onto the trust fund and have the trust fund direct those funds directly to to CalPERS, that way, you know, we can save some of our income tax and handle our normal operations. So why would we pre-fund pension obligations? So one of the reasons is we complete, we have complete local control over the assets. So the agency has complete control of the assets, including the contributions, the amounts and dispersments and the timing and the risk tolerance levels for our investments. Our pension rate stabilization, the assets can be transferred to the retirement system at our discretion or potentially reducing or eliminating any large fluctuations that we have in our employer contribution amounts. And therefore, any day fund, so if we have an emergency source of funds, when employee or employee revenues are strained, like we just talked about in difficult budgetary or economic times, we have that amount that we can use. And then also diversification. So it allows our investment flexibility and offers potential for the assets to earn greater returns than a general fund would allow, so it also can spread the risk between the spending, sending additional money to CalPERS. And lastly, it is also government finance officers associated, GFOA, recommends pre-funding your OPEB liability and consider it a best practice. So one of the things that the contribution does, it actually goes, when it goes into a trust, is actually considered an asset. And so that offsets the liabilities that are on our financial statement, so it makes our financial position look better as well. So just give you an example of some of the cities that are in counties that are actually using the parse 115 trust. It's a partial list, they have over 149 cities and towns that are currently using as of August of 2022, the 34 counties, 111 special districts and they also have some community college districts and school districts as well, so just to name a few, I just tried to pick some that were close and some that were buried inside, so we have the county of Monterey, county of Contra Costa, current county. We have Delray Oak City, Carmel, Golita, Gilroy, Richmond, Coronado, Fort Bragg, Maripoles, the center, Clara, Morgan Hill, Pasadena, Beverly Hills, Santa Ana, etc. So these are just some examples. And so our recommendation was first is to add the following language to the existing reserve policy to include a section dedicated as a pension reserve funding policy and important to read as follows, that the city will annually set a That the city will annually set aside and allocate resources of a minimum of one million to, precisely to two point, two point five million during the budget cycle um, to the pension reserve fund. To be used to fund employee pension and other post employment benefits, OPEB liabilities. These funds will be invested in the city's designated pre funding investment vehicle to reduce investment risk and to smooth the volatility from year to year fluctuations in annual required contributions to CalPERS. The dollar amount of the annual contribution will be reviewed by the city council on a biannual basis for adjustments and additional funding. And then our conclusion is staff will conduct, we will go back and conduct um, an RFP. And then return to council with competitive award to one of the section one fifteen trust operators, there are several out there. And then staff will also recommend funding um, the approved trust account provider with the two, two million dollars that we currently have set aside and the pensions are fine. And then lastly, we'll recommend adopting policies and procedures on how the city can withdraw those funds. And which include requiring actually taken by the city council and potentially be an allocating additional dollars into the fund. And that concludes my presentation and I will turn it back over to Hans.
Yes, uh, thank you, Rafaela. The, uh, you've seen that, that um, in Rafaela's presentation. Uh, around hundred fifty cities and then thirty four counties have a section uh, one one five fund set up. The section one one five funds uh, have different uh, subcategories uh, in which we can uh, allocate our funding. And again, that will be decision that we will bring forward to the city council to, with the recommendation from staff. Those different uh, allocation of funding strategies range from um, a strong capital appreciation strategy that basically invests more than sixty percent into equity. Um, stocks to a very conservative um, strategy that um, uh, invests um, something between five to twenty percent into equity stocks. And the return of investment is with the more progressive or the more aggressive style over a ten year period, about eight percent. And that's what is, what is the old number that, that CalPERS was, was striving to achieve. And with the conservative investment at the low end, it's about three percent. And I wanted to share with you about uh, how, where, where other cities and counties and agencies are investing their money. Um, most of them, uh, probably about seventy two percent of, of the cities. Uh, go into the moderate and moderate conservative funding strategy. So that has a return of investment of about four percent to six percent. So that's where you find basically the bulk of the cities and the counties investing their money. Uh, just a small number of, of agencies, um, almost six percent are going actually into the most aggressive form of, of the section one one five funding options, which is the capital appreciation. So that's just six percent of, of all the folks, um, mostly seventy two percent of, of the agencies are settling in something moderate, conservative and moderately conservative. So um, I wanted to add this as, as information as well to you and we're looking forward to your questions.
Good, thank you, Rafaela. Thank you for your very thorough presentation as always. If you don't mind, I had a couple of questions. One was, tell us about the section one fifteen trust. So we do an RFP and somebody manages this money, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Rafaela.
Okay, so there, there are a few companies out there, so parse is one of them. We basically give them the money and they act as, they have a trustee, they have a financial um, uh, advisor, and they actually invest our money based on our risk tolerance. We basically tell them, like Hans was giving the different percentages of the returns and the types of investments. We basically tell them what our risk tolerance is. Um, are we, you know, we think, you know, we're going to roll a dice, or we're going to be like, yes, you know, we're going to be a little conservative, but we're moderate. So we tell them where we, you know, how we, how comfortable we are, and then they invest our monies and they manage it. And up to a certain dollar point, it's like there is um, active management or passive management, so it's passive up until you get to about five million dollars that's invested. And at that point, you have a money manager that's actually actively looking at our funds on a regular basis.
And so just to put it on a, a microphone on you, to put it on a personal or a level that somebody, a retired school teacher can figure out. So if you have an investment and you have an IRA, for example, that money is your money managed by whoever your broker is. And so is this, the money, the investment would be with the broker? With the trust?
Right.
Right, we would have an account, obviously, it would be paper. And I think you mentioned if the city had an emergency, could it access this fund?
So as far as you can access it, but you can only use it for pension or OPEB related um, expenses. So what you could, what it would do is, or if we needed some money so we could divert the funds that we actually already have to our emergency. But we can withdraw money from or direct money from the trust to pay for the pension of the OPEB.
Got it. For example, if the city couldn't meet its pension obligation to CalPERS one year, then.
We would have the fund, the trust, direct the money directly.
The trust could backfill that, okay, that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to your, to the response uh, in uh, for your question. Uh, there are, there are two major players out there, parse is one, CalPERS itself offers also a section one one five fund. And um, the funds are, are like if you buy a mutual fund from Fidelity or Vanguard or um, Schwab. Uh, they have different fees attached to that, so that plays a role as well. The oversight by uh, for the CalPERS one one five fund is from the CalPERS board. So um, you get basically the same oversight that you get for our CalPERS funding. Uh, with that, you will have the same um, investment strategies. Uh, whereas a second, uh, the, the other group might have a slightly different uh, investment strategy. So while, for instance, CalPERS um, is, 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 is putting emphasis on, let's say, uh, certain um, uh, investments that, that are socially responsible and that are um, in a way um, um, a flavor of, of the time reflection, what, what, what is the priority in Sacramento? You may have with parse a, a funding strategy that, that looks not at those factors with the eyes of, of a CalPERS board, but with the eyes of, of a different investor. So you know, with that, you, you will find slight differences in, in the percentages that they invest. And also the percentages in the rate of uh, of, of return. So that we will have to look this all analysis when we issue an RFP, should you allow us to go forward with that? And bring this all back to you, but these are the two larger flavors there.
Yep, we got it. Now, in the analysis, you were talking about classic versus Pepper.
Yeah.
And it looks like Pepper is, and for the public, a public employees pension reformer. Something like that.
Retirement Act, yes.
Retirement Act, pretty close. I won't say close enough for government work, my wife tells me not to say that. A- and so uh, that, that's sustainable, it looks like in the long term. But the, the, the real key that that's always difficult is the stock market. We've been, stock market, it wasn't that long ago when it broke a ten thousand point barrier and everybody got excited. And now it's near thirty thousand. And, and I think with the inflation and potential recession, will this, how will this group, this trust, section one fifteen trust um, anticipate and are we at the mercy of the stock market, so to speak?
It depends on your investment strategy. So if you, if you prefer to put less into the stock market, but more into long term annuities and long term investments. Uh, with guaranteed rate of returns, um, and you're happy with a three percent return. Uh, you're, you, you're managing that way your, your risk uh, for the stock market. So uh, that's an absolutely great question and, and I would um, I would think right now that we should advise to come up with a funding or with an investment strategy that does not put uh, emphasis on the highest risk. But on a constant rate of return, because we want to use the section one one five fund as, as the ability to infuse those funds into our annual CalPERS payments. And as Rafaela showed you, uh, they will increase by, uh, from now twenty four, what was it, twenty million to twenty seven million by twenty seven, uh, twenty twenty seven. So um, that's, that's the, 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 uh, the beauty of the system is that we have a savings account. You cannot plunder it, comma, council, comma, because it has to go to, 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 uh, to pensions. And, and think about it, our fund for economic uncertainty, we, from time to time, we are looking at it for one time. Uh, ideas that, that we might think might be useful. I'm not saying that this council has done that, but previous council have, have eyed that as part of maybe um, a strategy to fund something if the money runs short. This uh, one one five puts it aside and uh, you, and we are looking um, at basically a very strict uh, 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 guidelines on how we can spend it.
Right, good, and well, and any portfolio has to be balanced, of course.
Yes.
It's one's uh, tolerance for risk, obviously. And you get less interest rate if you take uh, less risk. Sure, good. Uh, those are my questions and a council member, Dan, you've had a little bit of experience with this, being on the uh, chief financial officer for our school district for many years.
So um, Rafael, thank you very much for the, the presentation. Can you go back to the Pepper slide for a second? The last two columns, uh, I think the last time we discussed this, that was about two thousand thirty. Where we will, will be at a hundred percent um, paying for, paying in it, was that, do you know when that, has that changed at all?
So this number has changed from June thirty twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, just when we presented um, the numbers to you back in March. Um, we went with the twenty twenty numbers, and now that we got our updates just two months ago, the numbers have changed already. Because we weren't fully funded in the Pepper accounts, you know, two months are, you know.
What I meant was that our unfunded liability will reach a point where everybody is paying into Pepper. That's where you want to hit. And I thought that was in two thousand thirty, and I'm wondering, because of the discount rate, whether it's gone back and forth, I, I don't know. I was just curious. It's okay, doesn't matter.
I, I think I know what you mean. I, I think you were interested, uh, where, where is the curve collapsing to the point that we are going down? And if I recall that correctly, uh, it, it was twenty thirty four, twenty thirty three, around that time.
That's an important part of your unfunded liability part.
Yes.
And then um, I, I just, I'll try and, I, I know I, I don't really have that many questions, except for the fact that, a comment that this is the, the great thing about a, a section one fifteen trust is that you're in charge or you're in control of your investments. Where um, CalPERS, you can, you can invest two million one year in your liability and the discount rate could change. And you could, that could evaporate very quickly. And so if you're investing in your own trust or your own, um, it's just much better to do. Absolutely is, so. Historically, they've outperformed, right? I think they've outperformed CalPERS. Most trusts.
Yeah. Mike? I, I don't know if we have the chart available, they, they outperformed, but just slightly, I, it was not.
I, I think I remember you.
Good. Other council questions at this point?
Um, so a question I have is the timing. I understand um, it's, the next move would be to go out to the RFP and get into the details of proposers to see what our choices would be from that selection. Would we have the the policy crafted for the, the one fifteen trust before we go to the RFP? Or would that be something we would do after the RFP?
I, I would suggest I, uh, one is not contingent on the other. You can have the policy drafted after the RFP. Uh, and again, it, it might be even part of the budget process for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. That we bring this forward to you, how do you want to fund it? Then you see also the overall picture of our balance at that time and, and you can make that decision. So uh, we, we are proposing uh, something in, in our recommendation that, that tells you what, what our funding strategy. Uh, what we favor there between a million to two and a half million per year. But um, the one is not dependent on the other, we have two million dollars right now that we can put into the selected fund. And then um, we can put this into the mid year budget, or we can put this at the twenty three, twenty four budget, whatever the preference of the council is.
Yeah, that, that makes sense because the um, the thinking I have now i- is, and this is dangerous because you're thinking in advance. And this is the whole dilemma, is how do you anticipate where we'll be in the future markets? Because both choices, uh, PERS or an outside uh, retirement services agreement is wholly invested in the market, it just depends on what risk we're willing to take. But I think it seems like going through the RFP process will be a good opportunity for the city council to go through additional education as we start to craft simultaneously coming out of that some policy that, you know, all five of the city council would agree is the right risk factor, because that's really the, the piece that we have to land on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the criteria for the public agency retirement for parse pension, and I know that there are several choices here, but it talks about at least a five million dollar. We currently have two, if we're looking at one and a half to two next fiscal year, we're still short of that five million. Is my math incorrect?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, really? Could you repeat that? Because that sounded good. I'm, I'm kidding. Um, so, so obviously um, our fiscal uh, manager in this. Rafaela, you must have a plan of how we get to the minimum criteria to qualify, to partner with the results of an RFP. So I'd like to know if five million is the benchmark. And in twenty twenty three, we're maybe a little short, what's the plan to get us where we at least qualify with that future partner?
What I would like to do is um, basically, once we get to mid year and we get to the end of the year, we'll see where our funding is. So as you saw, our revenues are starting to pick up again, and, and once we get that, and I know part of the um, questions have been about fully funding and making sure that our, that we're balancing our budget and we're spending all the revenue that we get in. So if we have this excess um, revenue, that this is exactly where we put it, so we can actually get to that five million quicker.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, that's the only questions I have right now.
Okay, I see council member Alan had his hand up. Alan, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So um, Rafael, I had a question about the OPEB. So that is other post employment benefits, like other than pension, if I'm understanding correctly, typically it's healthcare.
Yes.
What kind of post employment healthcare benefits does the city offer? Do we pay for premiums or things like that for employees post employment?
I believe that's how that works, so I think that um, we have um, employees, once they retire, then we still have the um, obligation to pay for their healthcare, so we pay for those premiums for them.
And so, and right now, I assume we're kind of basically paying those costs on an ongoing basis. So you know, in a given year, we know what that's going to cost and, and basically we budget for it.
Exactly.
So I guess my feeling is that that is that's a cost I'm sort of less concerned about compared to the pension cost, which I think we have a lot less control over, and I think is a much larger thing. So there was one figure that kind of showed our money going into this fund and like some of it going to OPEB and some of it going to pension. Is that, if, if we put money into a section one fifteen, do we have to set, yeah, that's the one that I, I didn't really like. Yeah, that's the one that I I didn't really like the look of that. Do we have to say, oh, we're going to put twenty percent or thirty percent or whatever into OPEB and a certain percent into pension? Or does it go one to one? And then we have the flexibility to spend it on either of those types of costs?
Actually, that's the beauty about PERS. You tell them where you want your money to go. So if we decide that we've got a million dollars or that five million dollars, we want to start by putting it all in the pension. We can do that. If we say that, you know, we want to put two hundred thousand dollars in OPEB just to start small, we can, we have the flexibility of telling them where we want our money to go.
I under, okay, so we have that flexibility. My preference would be that we focus on pension, I guess, is then what I would like to communicate. And then in terms of the aggressiveness, so I understand more aggressive, more potential return, also more potential loss. We've lived through some interesting times, I guess I would say, over the last fifteen years. And so I tend towards a more conservative approach because I think there's a lot of folks who control the market, who don't really care about our retirees or the city. And and so anyway, I'm just would like just to communicate that, either a moderate or a more conservative approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Did you have any questions before we go public? All right, we we'll do right now is find out if we have some public comment. Anyone in the council chambers wanted to comment about a city's policy with respect to this trust? None of the people whose lives are going to be, other pensions are going to be impacted in the future? Nope. And I don't see anybody online. Clementine, do you have anybody?
No, I was just about to say no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
I can see that on my computer, too. If I look at attendees under panelists, all right, close the publicly comment section, back to the council. The recommendation is to approve a pension OPEB liability reserve policy. We ready to go? Uh, go, Councilmember Tyler?
I I just like to see some kind of something, maybe not in this policy necessarily, but I think when we're looking at developing a strategy to address the pension liability, that we make some concession towards paying directly to CalPERS and helping to pay that the liability down and not just focusing at all on the the pension trust. I think that's good as a security, but I think if we can diversify our strategy a little bit to try to help pay it down faster, while at the same time creating some security in regards to, you know, if there is an economic crisis and we can have that flexibility. But I but I think our dollars go a lot further, the more and quicker that we're putting funding in there. And so I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of a strategy that's not solely focused on the the section one fifteen. I'm not sure how other feels about that, but I I did raise this when we talked about it earlier this year and just wanted to make sure that we don't lose sight of that.
Um, so and I think it merits having some information come back. But as we've gone through this, and I personally have gone through this the last eight years on the council with a lot of speakers and and experts coming forward. One of the reasons why this council and past councils have not paid PERS additional is the threat of actually it not benefiting us. And actually, the numbers change on us when we do prepay to PERS. And so that's that becomes the challenge. But I think we should get some clarification on that in the future. I think that's the beauty of the one fifteen is that we're outside of PERS earning interest and gives us the complete control at the times we need to pay or stopgap. But if you send a bunch of money to PERS, the value of that money doesn't necessarily just pay down future projected costs or anticipated death. It it actually could penalize you and work the other way and wind up not getting the value. So I I think it's, it merits some conversations to to get the details. But that's the way I understand it, is that's where there's a risk. And that's why we have not paid towards PERS. We've been waiting to do the one fifteen, so we have more control.
Interesting, yeah. Yeah, that's well said. It's a discount rate is really.
The discount rate is where it gets you. So if you have, say, ten million dollars and you shift it and give it to PERS, then all of a sudden, that ten million dollars doesn't actually reduce what you thought was your debt. You're only going to get credit for some of that. So it's weird the way it works, but it's the discount rate. So we should, we should have that conversation when it comes back with more definitive input. So the the other thing I was going to say is the luxury of the one fifteen is, it gives each council the decision points to, at the right time, to transfer pay when it benefits your balance sheet the most, without the risk of things going sideways on the discount rate. That was just the answer I wanted to provide. Okay, so Clyde, I wanted to also just make some additional comments. I sure, I am in favor of the one fifteen. We've been talking about it for several years. And I think, you know, obviously, we've all gone through the market changes, the COVID economic downturn, and and we have a plan now. I like the plan of moving forward. But I think tonight's information and action is that we are in agreement that we do it, but we are not landing on the actual verbiage of the economic policy tonight, right? Right. So we're just giving instructions to the city manager to go forth and prepare for potential RFPs. Yes. And then it would come back to us as the result of the RFP. And then I like the idea that we learn more as we go through the RFP and then we look at potential policies that align with the overall strategy of living in a new, in a new manner under the one fifteen trust. Uh, so I'm, I'm all in favor of it. I won't even express whether I'm conservative or want to go higher risk. I would rather defer that until I learn more from those that respond to the RFP. Uh, when we get down to the nitty gritty of selecting who's going to be our asset manager. Uh, but I like the fact that we are able to take advantage of being more in control of and having an attitude of, we'll have short-term decisions based on the event, the balance and the appropriate challenges that we get from PERS and the market rates, but also we have an attitude that the one fifteen is really a long-term mechanism. So somewhere in there, I think we need to think in terms of this one fifteen trust lasts a very long time. So we want to try and maximize the the safest interest that we can earn on that available extra money going into the trust. That's it.
All right, I'm going to make a motion for the staff recommendation, and that's to go forth and prosper with a pension OPEB liability reserve policy. Second, and more discussion?
Could I just finish my thought because I wasn't quite?
Oh, yeah, sure, of course.
Um, so the recommendation in in the motion tonight doesn't necessarily obligate us to moving forward with the section one fifteen per se. It just allows us to move forward with this strategy and then figure that out as we move forward. Like, do, does that give us the flexibility of saying we can use some to make direct payments?
Well, I think every year when we build our budget, we can decide how much we're going to invest in our fifteen. I mean, we can have it in a policy, but maybe one year we don't make the investment. So we're just having, we're just putting a policy in place so that at the end of the year, we can contribute to it if we want to.
Yes.
Am I right about that?
Yes, yeah. So so Councilmember Williamson, yes, you you're not obligated to 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 pay into here or there. If you want to make an extra payment to CalPERS, because that's what the council likes to do, you can make an extra payment to CalPERS.
This just gives us another option to pay into.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, and even though I, I think that we're better off to spend as much into the one fifteen trust, we never give up our choice to be able to say, okay, now's an opportunity. We should cut more of this check and directly pay it to PERS. It's just, is it in our advantage and do we get the maximum return that we want? And that, and that's a case by case. Yeah, we don't lose that option ever.
No.
And you, did you have some other thoughts? You said you wanted to pursue?
Well, and I was just wondering, I was wanting to ask Rafaela what her thoughts are in regards to the conversation that Ed and I were having.
Specifically.
Particularly on his, the point that he was making around the.
Discount rate.
The discount rate.
So if he does have a point about the discount rate, it can, it can work against you because once you put that money in, it's kind of, you don't really see the, you don't really see the drop as you, that you would expect to see. So for that, I I do recommend the PERS as opposed to CalPERS. And and it gives you, again, it gives you more flexibility. But again, the way that this policy that I recommended to, you know, when I put in a pre-funding investment vehicle, meaning you can use, if we decide to go, or you decide to go with PERS, or we decide to go with CalPERS, however we decide, or council decides where they want to put the money, this just obligates the city to put the money away. It just says that between one million and two point five every year, we will put, we'll put a minimum of one million dollars away to to go towards our pension obligations. And then how we do that, we'll come back to council and then you make that decision.
Okay, I I have other questions, but for the sake of tonight's conversation, I think we're good. So I I appreciate the dialogue.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, would you be so kind and just repeat the motion? You don't want to adopt the policy, just go forward with an RFP for section one one five? Or or did we misunderstand your motion?
Staff recommendation. Okay, so on the agenda, it says, you approve a pension OPEB liability reserve policy. Did you need more than that?
So can I, can I offer a clarification? Because maybe I confused it by what I said. This, this pension reserve funding policy, in my mind, triggers the go. Um, but this is not necessarily the investment policy that we have later. I think two different things.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with this. But as I was talking about, as we go out to RFP, we'll then learn more about how we'll want to manage and craft a, an investment policy, different thing.
Yes, that's my understanding. So what are, what are we?
Oh, I I'm sorry. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I think based on what Councilmember Williamson is saying and Councilmember Smith, I think the intention is to adopt this pension reserve funding policy, but maybe we change the word vehicle to vehicles so that it can be more than one type of mechanism, right? It might be a one fifteen trust or it might be a direct payment to CalPERS. It is. It's not, okay, just checking.
I think, I I think we'll leave it with singular because the other investment vehicle is CalPERS already, where we are paying into every year after year. So I I understood from Councilmember Williamson's input that he's not interested in the section one one five fund by CalPERS, but you were in in, wanted to invest money back into the normal CalPERS account. And that's why I would say vehicles has to be singular vehicle because this is just the additional vehicle to that.
Okay, I guess what I'm not clear on then is, what is the? So only the one one five trust is considered a pre-funding investment vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it, the way I see it, it's, it's like you're paying your mortgage every year. If you, every month, if you want to pay more to towards your principal, you can, but you still have a mortgage. And and that's the same thing that we have with CalPERS. We still have to pay in CalPERS. If you want to pay more, we can.
Right.
That vehicle is already there.
I was just trying to make sure the policy matches the intention, the words on the paper.
I mean, but the difference is that, uh, your mortgage can't go up. I mean, if you're paying it down, it can't go up, whereas CalPERS can. You can pay down your CalPERS obligation and they can still, they can still say, yo, more.
But depending if it's an adjustable rate. If it is, then you will be paying more.
I guess I see what.
That's true, but I would never get an adjustable rate.
We're saying this one, one million to two point five million will be used, will be invested in the pre-funding investment vehicle as opposed to, you know, allowing that flexibility. So I think alternatively, it could say these funds can be, can be used.
A council member Williamson, but the thing is, the money that would go into this fund at any given time, a council could say, we want to take a million out of that and pay down our pension liability to CalPERS. Right, so it isn't like, it isn't really an either or. If we put the money into this fund in the future, a council can always decide when, in particular, there's, there's a need. They could say, we want to, we want to pay down some of our CalPERS obligation. Is that correct, Rafaela?
Yes, yes, specifically writing this in in a way that says we are putting money, well, number one, we're putting money away. That's first and foremost. We are, we, we're obligating ourselves to think about the liability when we budget. We're putting money away. And then we're saying, okay, where are we putting it? So we've got, some of us needs to go on a pre-funding investment, but we also say that we're going to come back, council, where you actually decide where it goes. So and you do that on an annual basis. You do that when we get to our, our budgeting cycle or when you come back on a biannual basis and say, we want to do, put the money here. So if we, this year, put in a million dollars and next year, we have a little extra and we have two point five, council can say, hey, let's put the one million into the section one thirteen. Let's put that extra one point five into directly in the CalPERS. You'll have that flexibility.
I I just, I.
Seems clear.
I I I see that the the language is is a little bit in conflict, but I mean, I, if if we're saying that it's, it's flexible, then I guess we'll say that it's flexible. I mean, this, the second to last sentence says that the funds will be invested in the pre-funding investment vehicle, which Hans is identifying as the section one fifteen. But then the last sentence says that it'll come back to the council. So I see where that flexibility is kind of baked in to a certain extent, but the sentence before kind of seems to be in conflict with that.
Well, so fundamentally, this policy, like any other policy, can be changed by the council and is also changed every year when we go through the budget process. So if we were, let's, worst case scenario, if we were faced with a point where we were unable to make the commitment of our one point five to two million, we have an RFP and obligations, but we have to fulfill that because we're signing a contract. But as we go forward, each and every council has to decide where the parts come together and what decisions are made on the policies within that budget. So in other words, this, this policy might change in in a year. But this is a good start for the one fifteen because I think if we don't, and we've been talking about this for about five years, I think, maybe six. Alan, you probably know better. You're the most senior on this current council. Um, and even back when the mayor was on other councils, I think that the approach was, what do we do about the unfunded liability? It has been lingering for a long time. So I'm motivated to get started on an RFP to see the details. And then we come back and get to discuss the details. But I think in concept, it's a great start. It's a commitment and it gets us closer and down the road having a strategy that actually has greater benefits than we have now.
It is, is the word will, Tyler, the one that's kind of, could you put can? Could, something like that, that's not as.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it. I just, I just wanted to 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 voice the discrepancy that I see, but I I will support the motion. I just want to make sure it's clear that it's, it does seem a little bit kind of victory, but.
Can I add one more thing?
I don't think it's.
So Councilman Tyler, I just want to make sure that you know that. So when we come back, this last little point is about having a specific policy. So the first one I envisioned as a policy that just basically obligates the city to put money away. One that we're going to come back with, when we, after we do the RFP, is one that says, like council, the real policy procedures are how we withdraw the fund. And I think this one here will be more to your, to liking about how we allocate what the money that we've already put away, whether it's in specifically into the section one fifteen or specifically goes to to CalPERS directly. So I think this is the part that is really important for the direction and the movement of the money as opposed to the first, the recommendation we're asking for tonight, if that makes sense.
Okay, I'm I'm pardon my interruption. I'll just, I'm just going to say a couple of things. And if this is the council's intention, then it will match exactly what the policy says. The policy says that you will annually set aside one million to two point five million into the pension reserve fund. And we already have this pension reserve fund. So you're committing to putting this money into the fund that. And we already have this pension reserve fund, so you're committing to putting this money into the fund that already exists. And the purpose of that is for pensions and OPEB liabilities. Great. These funds will be invested. So this means this is not discretionary. They will be invested in a pre-designated investment vehicle, which I'm understanding to be a one fifteen plan. So that language is not very flexible. That's saying you will, you will do this. And then it states the purpose of doing that. And then it says the dollar amount of the annual contribution, it doesn't say to what annual contribution to the one fifteen, I'm assuming, or, um, to the, I'm not sure, um, will be reviewed by the city council on a bi-annual basis. And so that's committing you to reviewing the dollar amount that's going to go from the pension reserve fund into the one fifteen. And so that, that is.
No, no, no.
That I'm telling, I'm, what I'm saying is what's on paper is as I've described it, if that's not the intention, then we need to rework the wording maybe a little bit.
Could, could, could you, I hate words missing this on the.
Well, it's important though, because this is a resolution.
I understand.
And it needs, they'd have to have a new resolution to change it.
Could, could you, could you start it by saying if funds are available for that fiscal year? Because then they may not be available. The, the one point, the one million or the two point five million may not be available.
You could change the will to a may.
Well, that's what I just said, you know, a could, may, might, sort of.
I, I think may would be better than if the funds are available, because funds theoretically are always available. It's a matter of choices, right?
Well, yeah, but that's.
But I do think that's embedded, embedded in may. I mean, it basically may says the council may do this. On the other hand, that's a pretty weak policy.
Can I make a friendly amendment to change the will in the second to last sentence to may? I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
All right.
Where, where are you referring to?
These funds may be invested in the cities to.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
As a pre-funding investment vehicle.
The only concern I would have with that is if it becomes may, then the council doesn't do it. And then you don't have a policy, as Alan just mentioned, pretty much. It, it eliminates the policy in a sense.
Well, or it could be these funds will be invested in the city's designated pre-funding investment vehicle or other pension funding. I don't know what the appropriate language would be to include something in there. So it's, it allows that flexibility for direct payments.
Well, I'd like to say that we always have that choice.
And, and, and when last piece is that if we don't have the funding available, but yet in the resolution, we're stating that we will do this allocation of one to two point five million at minimum, then it, I guess it's kind of seems counterintuitive to the whole point to the one fifteen, which is making sure that we have the funds set aside when there's a, a situation where we can't do that. So.
I mean, the way I look at the policy as, as, as the recommendation reads is it's really basically the council right now saying, we're going to commit to investing at least a million and up to two and a half million every year towards our pension liability. Any other kind of change weakens that and means it may not happen. There may be something else that comes up and we decide we can't do it. I mean.
This is getting, it's getting a little bit more convoluted. And, and I hear what you're saying and I, and I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing several sources, Gabrielle is saying, uh, paying down CalPERS maybe isn't a good strategy. So we need to have more information, whether it is or not, I don't know. And this is the staff recommendation, obviously, even our staff's a, a little bit not, not confused, but not quite in, in one voice, I would suggest you rework this and bring it back. And we could probably do it pretty quickly. So I'm going to withdraw my motion and, and I would just say, bring this back with refined wording.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may speak, uh, and add, we want this as a will. Because, um, we want, we need to tackle the pensions with a funding strategy.
Yes.
Uh, this, this policy will not change dramatically, uh, when we bring it back, because it becomes a question then for the council. Do you want to do something about the pensions and you want to commit to that? Or should we, uh, commit to, to the words may and, and with that, open the doors to not doing it? Uh, with respect to council member Williamson's, uh, request, we can do that as well. Uh, it doesn't mean that you, um, uh, with, with, what, what, uh, council member Williamson was talking about is do an extra payment to CalPERS of five hundred thousand, a million, two million dollars. Um, that can be done above and beyond that. Uh, so this is not mutually exclusive, uh, but this is a, is the policy to fund the one one five fund. Uh, how we, if we want to do an extra payment to CalPERS or not, the council can do this at any given time. And so I, I believe that the policy, as we have written here right now, uh, is, is forceful. And it tackles the problem that we try to res, to, to solve here with, which is how do we ensure that future generations of councils have more room to maneuver when CalPERS, uh, contributions or annual payments come in higher? Again, right now we are paying twenty million dollars per year to CalPERS. So, uh, when I told council member Williamson, you can do both. I want to be clear, uh, uh, he, the, the council, a majority of three votes can do both. If they want to do that, they can find funding to pay into the pension reserve fund according to the policy here, and they can find funding, our staff can provide ideas for funding to do the extra payment. Should that be the will of the council to do that?
Yeah, it's also the whole idea, the funds will be invested. Future councils can say, nope, we're not going to do it.
Yes.
And it's a policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so my motion's back on the table.
So is my second.
One second. So let's go ahead. We've had a good discussion. Roll call, please.
All right, you are keeping me guessing. Um, council member Hoffa.
Yes.
Council member Albert.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, hey, I'm the one who tells jokes around here. That was a good one. Let's take a little break and, uh, hey, this is a joke. I know where we can get one point seven two million dollars for our pension fund. Come on, you knew I had to say that.
Where?
It's ready, Mr. Mary.
Thank you. I was just getting the negative numbers. All right. Welcome back. The next item is take a look at a purchase agreement with Golden State Fire Apparatus for a Pierce 107-foot enforcer ascendant tiller tractor drawn aerial truck, a fire truck, I believe. Yes, and so we'll go right ahead and hear our staff presentation. And I will again ask our talented city manager to introduce the thoughtful fire chief.
I will introduce him tactically. The from time to time, we we bring forward large scale purchases. I think over the past two years, we had a total of three fire engines that we brought forward. There were dire replacements for our fleet. And one of the the largest pieces of equipment, actually the largest, single largest piece of equipment we have is a fire truck. And tonight we are proposing to replace the 2008 KME fire truck with a newer model. And the fire chief, Gordon Ponhalter, will give you an overview why we are doing this, what the pros and cons are, and a few details of that purchase. In 2020, the the city also in anticipation of of this truck purchase, as well as the the two past purchases that we already accomplished, we created a line of credit also with the Bank of America for up to $5 million, I believe, in purchases. Because we, first of all, we didn't want to burden ourselves with those large one-time costs. And second, we foresaw the 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 upcoming purchases. So this is basically the completion of of that cycle of of purchases that we carried with us for quite some time and made it public in 2020 when we entered into that agreement. I think it was in 2020. Yes. So with that, Gordon, go ahead, please.
As you said, I'm here to talk about the proposal for purchasing a new fire truck to replace the the one of the ones in our fleet. And we talked, you talked a little bit earlier about investment into infrastructure. And one of the things that that past councils have done is when when financial times are tight, you don't make big purchases. And there were many years where we kind of kicked the can down the road with with our fleet. And I want to thank the council because we've done a great job over the last few years to upgrade the fleet and and make some desperately needed replacements of of fire apparatus. And so with this last, this proposal here, basically will bring our fleet to to current standards and and bring it to where it should be. We're talking about replacing the aerial truck. The truck is is the vehicle that has the large ladder on top of it. And it is a tool in the toolbox that we use for for certain types of operations. One of the things is it allows us to reach the roof of tall buildings or buildings with a setback or on a slope. So we can reach up to buildings that are set away from the street or well above the street, in addition to reaching up to the top of a high tall buildings. We use it in in various methods during rescue operations. One is we can reach elevated windows and balconies to perform rescues from upper floors. We've also use it regularly as an observation platform for any kind of marine rescue situation. When you get up higher, you can get a better view onto onto the water to find a lost swimmer or something like that. And then we've also used it as a high anchor point where we can attach rope system to the tip of the ladder and use it to to bring people up from that have fallen over the side or off of a cliff along the coastline. It also gets used for an elevated water stream so that when we need to apply water on a large fire, we can we can apply it from a from a high vantage point to get the reach and penetration. And then lastly, we, one of the other great features that it has is it's a large vehicle. And therefore, when we get calls out on the freeway, we park it kind of blocking the lane so that our personnel aren't the aren't the ones that get hit by by traffic. And that if 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 somebody's not paying attention and run into something, we'd much rather than run into a vehicle. We have two trucks in our current fleet. The first one, in October of 2006, the council authorized the purchase of a TractorTron aerial. At that time, the fire department did an evaluation of all the options to determine that the tractor drawn aerial is the better option operationally. And I'll talk a little bit about that again in in a minute. And with that action, it resulted in the purchase of a 2008 KME truck. In 2012, because in part because of the the truck being needing servicing on a regular basis, we, the council authorized the purchase of a reserve truck. It also allows us to better train our our personnel on operations of the vehicle. And and the decision was made at that time to buy a 1998 used American La France truck from the city of Santa Clara. At that same time, the council also authorized a replacement plan to purchase a new truck every 15 years, whereby the frontline truck gets placed into reserve status, the reserve truck gets it's taken out of the fleet and and surplus and and we put the new truck in frontline service. That way, we we keep a truck for about 30 years and 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 have it in frontline service for 15 years. Based on that plan, a new truck purchase would be due, actually not this this current year, but next year. But there's a two reasons why we want to, we are encouraging to do to accelerate that by just a little bit. One of them being that the prices of these things have gone up tremendously over the last few years. And we've been told to expect another huge price increase at the end of this month. And then the second thing is the lead time for getting one of these. If we place the order today, it'll be 24 to 30 months before we see it is what they're telling us right now, just because of the supply chain and and the challenges in the labor and everything else. It's just they're just not making them very fast. So we would actually be receiving it not until about 2025, early 2025 at this point, which means that it would actually be well past the the replacement date. We've also been experiencing some challenges with our current trucks. Both of them were really not designed for the hilly terrain of Monterey. The the one that we bought new was was based on in the Los Angeles City specification and for the trucks they use in their downtown area, which is pretty flat area. And then the reserve truck was purchased for the city of Santa Clara, which is also a fairly flat area. And and so because of the hilly terrain and the excess weight that these vehicles have, because they are equipped with a water tank and and a pump, the the excess weight has created a lot of problems with our drivetrain and axles. And we've had to spend quite a bit of money of making repairs to those things. And we've experienced a significant downtime. And that was shared actually with council about a year and a half ago on a presentation. So what we're, what we're looking at is to replace the truck so that we can maybe with with something that
Down us back up, please. Sorry. And your third bullet, are you suggesting the new truck would not have a water and tank?
Yes, correctly. It would not have, and actually that should say a pump and tank. That's a typo on the slide there, but yes.
All that extra weight is is creating undue stress on the vehicle.
Yes, exactly. And and the way we operate today, it's not something that we we need. Actually, we're driving them both right now with the water tank empty to reduce the weight, but it's still carrying around the tank and and the heavy pump.
Thank you.
So we, I mentioned that the fire department did a did research back when the first tractor drawn aerial was was purchased. The there, you can also get one that doesn't have the articulating chassis and does not have the driver in the back. The the challenges are that the the tiller truck, the benefits of a tiller truck are that it has better maneuverability in spite of being as long as it is, because it articulates in the middle and has the steering rear rear wheels, it could actually turn in tighter spaces and move in tighter spaces than a fire than our fire engines can, which are substantially smaller. It also creates an increased pool storage capacity because of the compartmentation on it. And the other great advantage is that the tiller operator, the person in the back sits up high and has a great overview of the vehicle. And and so it increases safety during during driving and and spotting issues because they can see a lot of things that the driver and the officer in the front cannot see. And then one of the other great advantages is that it's easier to position at this emergency scene because you can jackknife it, you can bend it to push out the the base of the ladder to get it closer to the building and to get it in positions that that you otherwise could not get to it. Really, a straight truck would achieve all the same same ability to do the work, just not with those advantages. But it does come at a cost savings of about $150,000. In in researching this, the fire department has still determined that operationally the 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 benefits of of the articulating chassis, the tractor drawn aerial chassis is 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 worth the extra extra cost there. One of the other concerns is that to get the same size ladder on a straight truck, you would probably have to go with a dual rear axle and dual rear axles on heavy vehicles eat tires. And so maintenance costs could could go up substantially if we went with a straight truck. As I said, one of the one of the big concerns with our current fleet is that we've seen a lot of expense due to 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 wear. And so we have also begun to evaluate options to reduce maintenance costs of trucks. One of them is let's buy a truck that's actually better suited for how we use it. So there will be no pump or or water tank on it so that we can reduce the weight. We are also looking at changing our deployment response policies so that we can reduce the number of times the truck gets automatically dispatched so that maybe it'll it'll get responded fewer times and get called in if if necessary. And then lastly, we're going to take a serious look and pilot a using an alternative response vehicle for incidents that doesn't require the capabilities of the truck. The truck is stationed here at the station here in downtown. And the engine is a rather busy engine company. And when they're out on a call and another call comes in in the downtown area, the truck handles it, no matter what kind of a call it is. And so we're looking at maybe a better option is to have that crew staff a different vehicle to respond to a medical call that comes in as a secondary call rather than taking the truck out. And that would reduce the the use and the wear and and should decrease the operation maintenance costs of the vehicle. As I said, the cost of trucks have been going up considerably when we first started looking at the
Just back up a moment, Gaudens, please. And that is, could you expand a little bit alternate response vehicle for incidents not requiring capabilities of truck? Is this something that's in the fleet right now? Is it under discussion or do you have an actual strategy plan for an alternative vehicle?
It's it, well, we we could use something that is in the fleet right now, but preferably we would buy another vehicle that's much smaller. And and that will actually possibly come before you in the once we evaluate all the options here. We also have the heavy rescue truck. It's destined, it it just had a major motor issue. And we're looking at about $60,000 to replace the motor. And so we're looking at a vehicle that maybe can fit both of those roles, buy something smaller to replace the rescue truck that can also function as its alternate response vehicle. And and that would reduce the cost of of repairing that vehicle as well as the the maintenance cost of the truck.
There's a lot of times I can see going up to the convalescent hospitals in Skyline. We'll see large fire vehicles, including the the one you're talking about. And so that's obviously wear and tear. And it's a medical response. And so the less you use it for that purpose, the longer it's going to last, the less repairs and maintenance that you're going to need. So it would make sense to me to kind of look at those two maybe together. Just a thought, because if you have an alternative, it may would a viable alternative, then it would make sense to me that you might want to look at a package. I don't know, just thinking out loud. And then on a fire truck, you have three people. If you had the alternate vehicle, would you still have three firefighters? Would you have two?
That that's something that we will have to work out because so we have three people assigned to the vehicle and they could split, we could. There's agencies that will split the crew and send two on that on the rescue vehicle or the small vehicle and leave the the one person behind that can still staff the truck. Or there's various methods and we have, we haven't done done the due diligence yet to look at all those options. Okay, but certainly there there are options for for
Yeah, I don't want to get in the weeds, but since you kind of talking about operations, I thought, well, maybe maybe you want to think about the new large truck and also its its partner, so to speak, or the supplemental truck together. I don't know, just just a thought. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, on on that, just to address that a little bit further, the the we would go to a different manufacturer to purchase that because this is purchased from a a large fire apparatus manufacturer. And we also have, we have two to two and a half years to before this one gets here to 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 work through all of that. So we we have time.
Yeah, that's a good point. Good point. Good to remind me. Thank you.
So we we, like I said, over the last several years, we've been working on on upgrading the fleet and the council has done a wonderful job of supporting us in in that way. When we first started looking at replacing the fleet, we actually looked at what a new truck would cost. And at that time, it was in the 1.2 to 1.3 million dollar range. This is about three years ago. With the with what's happened in the economy, they typically have about a 2% cost increase on an annual basis. But we've seen some pretty substantial cost increases in addition to those of of close to 10% mid-year. And so we've, so at this point, we have a current proposal that's good until the end of this month for 1.72 million roughly. And we've actually been told that if we were to ask for that quote to be good for the end to the end of this month again today, it would be, it would have to be more because the cost of the motor that's in this truck has gone up by about $30,000 to $40,000, the price of the motor alone as of October 1st. So they're actually going to lose a little bit of money or a little bit of profit margin on it because they're locked into this quote for us right now. We anticipate or we've been told that there will be a six and a half percent cost increase on on November 1. And when you do six and a half percent cost increase on a number like this, it's north of $100,000. As I mentioned, also, it has a 24 to 30-month lead time, so it's going to be in quite a while before we see it. And and at this time, because we we want to make sure that we manage our our cash reserves and our money well, we have the existing Bank of America master lease agreement. And the proposal is to use that to make the purchase. We've used that one time previously to purchase one of the engines. And and it's, there's still plenty of money available to make this purchase using those funds. So the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Golden State Fire Apparatus for one Pierce 107-foot enforcer ascendant tiller truck at a cost not to exceed 1.72 million and utilize the financing via Bank of America Public Capital Corporation master equipment lease for this purchase. And that is my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, with council, doesn't mind. I was just wanted to explore a little bit. So the this vehicle is primarily stationed here downtown. And so I'm thinking, again, we have a contract with Carmel Pacific Grove Airport and others, right? So in essence, it's one one large fire department. So then I was reading that Carmel just is purchasing a fire truck. So even though our personnel are all one fire department, it sounds like the vehicle purchases are still remain with the individual jurisdictions. And so the question is, why do we do it that way? Because with this truck that we're talking about purchasing, would it be used in Pacific Grove? Would it be used in Carmel? Why does each jurisdiction purchase their own vehicles when we have a unified, spread out fire department? Do you understand what I'm asking? You understand what I'm asking?
So it the contracts were initially set up so that each of the agencies that we provide services to. Turned their fleet over to us in the contract under a a lease, a no cost lease to us. And and they also have the obligation to fuel, maintain, you know. Pay for all the repair costs and to replace those vehicles. Um, under the current terms of the of the agreement, um and that's and so Carmel just uh two weeks ago uh. Voted to do, the council voted or committed to buying a new engine. Um, and I'm actually going to be in front of the Pacific Grove City Council tomorrow evening, making the same recommendation that they replace their engine. Um, the truck itself that we use here, yes, it does get used in all of the areas that we serve. In the initial agreements with. With Pacific Grove, when we first entered into an agreement with Pacific Grove, there was actually a provision in the contract that they paid a certain percentage of the cost of the truck. Um. The the maintenance and operations costs, the staffing costs, and I think the depreciation. And at some point, uh about ten, eleven years ago, that was changed so that they no longer pay for that. And and I can't speak to what what the thinking was it that because I was not here at the time. Um, but we do, we just actually initiated uh a a work with a with a consultant with Baker Tilly um to. Do a full analysis of how we cost out all of our contracts so that we can make sure that we're not underwriting them or they're not underwriting us. That it's that it's a fair and and equitable equitable way that to to bill them. That should be done by, um I think the target now is by at the end of the calendar year. And we will probably make some adjustments to to our contracts based on that, but until we get to that point. Um, now that we're doing this third party independent review, I I think it's important we let that run through before we make any decisions. On on how we adjust contracts.
Yeah, that okay, I I understand that, but it just uh this just seems to me looking from the outside in. That if this new truck was needed in Pacific Grove, it would be sent to Pacific Grove. And but if they're not paying a a fair share of it. Then on the other hand, you're going to have to keep track of every vehicle that you own and figure out, well, how much time was it spent in Monterey? How much time was it spent in Carmel, then prorate its cost? It may be something you want to look at as well, because if our personnel are unified, why isn't our purchasing of vehicles. Unified so we don't duplicate vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Now, questions for Gaudens? Uh, yeah, council member?
Actually, no, the city of Seaside has recently purchased one, um it's much smaller than the one that we have. And then Pebble Beach also has one and and then actually the Presidio is stationed out on Ford Ork, they have one as well.
Under the the fire department's uh control, the these two are the only snorkel trucks or ladder trucks.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, good. Um. So I've got to say first off, I I really like the name of American La France, but I like the enforcer better. So I li- I like the new the new name. Um, so. I I like the idea that it's an opportunity for. Um, piloting to to really look and see how the response plans could come together. And uh I appreciate the the mayor going into some of the details. Uh, but look forward to seeing and hearing how that plays out, uh because you've admitted and and outlined how. The equipment you currently have doesn't work because of the weight in certain areas of the community. With the new truck coming online uh in in say thirty months, that certainly gives you some operational flexibility. But how do you get the water that's necessary if you have the new truck without a tank? I know you have hydrants and all that, but if you envisioned a response to a location. That was outside of the downtown area, but that ladder truck went. And it's a first response, how do you augment the necessity to have water to that truck if you don't have water onboard with that ladder truck? Hydrants, obviously, but what's walk me through the the choices here.
So so when we respond to a structure fire, you don't get just the single vehicle responding. Every one of our stations, we have an engine company staff and the engine company carries the water, the tank and the pump and the hose. And that's operationally, when we go to a fire, the primary function of of extinguishing the fire and and putting water on the fire. Is is a is a function of the engine company.
Okay.
That that the truck company is is delegated other tasks such as ventilation and rescue and and other tasks that don't require the water. An engine company will be either on scene first or will be right behind the truck company. Um, no matter where we're going at what any time we're going, that's just because there's. Many more engines dispersed throughout the system um than 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 the one truck, and so that's that's where the water comes from. The the engine can supply water to the truck if we need to do an aerial um master stream operation.
Yeah.
But that but that's something that isn't isn't something that you set up and do on an urgency basis, that's if if, okay, we're. We're going defensive, we've we're going to lose this structure and and so it's well into an incident. Where you set up that kind of an operation rather than immediately.
Okay, and so with that thinking, the decision to go without a tank and water on a ladder truck becomes a much easier one. Because you realize that it's the engine company responding anyway. And so you're saving the weight and the wear and tear on it.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and what do you anticipate that might be? Uh, something that would would hinder you from being successful in this transition to a um. A new truck coming online that is not water carrying and is utilized in a different way. What what do you anticipate that might prevent you from being successful in the implementation?
As I said, the the not carrying water is actually not going to be anything new for us. Because we currently don't carry water in the trucks, even though they have the tank and the capability of carrying it. Um, so that piece won't actually be anything new. I I think that the um. As you know, change is always difficult and and as you implement change, there there will be, you know, growing pains and and uh maybe some resistance or or. Having to tweak the system and so tho- those will be some of the challenges that we face, but the. Wha- what the what we're proposing to do isn't something that has never been done anywhere else before, so certainly there's opportunities to turn to other agencies. And and learn from them and and implement something that can be more successful right from the get-go.
Okay, great, thank you. It sounds like you'll save some money on the maintenance side right away. Uh, what's the plan to sell uh the KME? What's the value of that one? Because you won't need three, that'll, you know, become a discharged surplus. You'd keep the American La France, what do you do with the KE?
Actually, we we will get rid of the American La France because it's substantially older than the KME.
Okay.
Um, and I'd be hard pressed to tell you what that'll fetch on the market, that not not a huge amount, may maybe in the thirty to fifty thousand dollar range.
All right.
But that's a that's a total guess.
We we just sold an uh retired fire engine uh on public surplus for, I believe, seventy five hundred dollars. And we were actually surprised that we were able to sell it. My fire engines are not really sought after pieces of equipment anymore, sad to say that, but we just sold a fire engine for, I think, sixty five hundred.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Great. All the questions.
Any question? Yeah, council member Tyler?
Um, so you said that the the life that we would have these at every fifteen years, we would look at purchasing a new. Um, truck. Are we anticipating a longer lifespan, given that we're not going to have the tank and the pump on the truck? To reduce the wear and tear on the vehicle?
So the the current policy that was adopted by the council um. States that it the replacement cycle we every fifteen years, but there's more factors than age that uh. That considered when making the decision to replace a vehicle like this, it's also maintenance costs and mileage. And mileage is usually not the factor that drives it because we don't put a whole lot of miles on them. Um, but when we see maintenance costs going the direction that the that we have been over the last few years. Sometimes you want to stop throwing good money after bad and and so certainly the flip side can be true. If we're seeing that maintenance costs aren't as high. It the decision could be made to extend the life of the truck and it's and I personally would not commit to always every fifteen years. Look at it and evaluate it and there comes a time when you say, okay, it's it's now doesn't meet current safety standards. Or it's it's costing us way too much to keep on the road, it makes more sense to to look at replacing it. So certainly it could extend the life.
Okay, thank you.
Remember Dan?
Well, this has to do with the finance, the Bank of America Public Capital Corporation Master Equipment Lease Agreement. Sorry.
Thank you.
But it is on.
Yeah.
Sir, good, thanks. You'd think after six years, I never. Um. I I I'm not quite sure I understand lease agreement, it's it's a purchase, but it's a it's not a lease, I assume. That's just on the funding source, correct? I I think that's what it is. And then there's a fee associated with using that that line of credit.
But I I don't know if Raffella is still on because she's probably more.
I was just curious, we've used this before, right? This line of credit on other equipment.
And and Raffella is prepared to answer this splendidly.
Oh, I don't see her.
Yes, we have used the the line of credit before, we spent about seven hundred thousand out of the five million that we were authorized. So I have been in contact with the AB to get an approximate over a seven year lease term. It would be about four point oh five percent um interest for that.
Is the finance charge um rolled into the the current price? Or is.
Just the interest, so when we initially opened up the our line of credit, there was a seventy thousand dollar one time um fee. Uh, bringing starts that we had, but it it was inclusive for any any for the entire line of credit. So it didn't matter how many times we came back to, we had already paid that seventy thousand, so now we're just paying the interest.
Is any of this funding coming out of the equipment replacement at all, or it's just it's. Financed.
This one, for this particular vehicle, it will be financed.
Okay. Okay.
Good, council member Alan has his hand up. Can't hear you, Alan. Still muted?
Yeah, Mayor Clyde, I had similar kind of thoughts to you as far as. How do we kind of reconcile or coordinate our long-term? Um, equipment costs with our partners and um. It it sounds like, it sounds like essentially our partners are really not paying. Or like they're not paying for, or maybe they're paying separately, I don't know. But I think what I would like to do, if chief, if this makes sense to you, is maybe um. After, you know, sometime in December, maybe after the elections and also. After you've had this conversation with Pacific Grove, I just think it would be good if we could have a joint meeting of. The various agencies that are all involved in our fire services. To discuss kind of long-term infrastructure needs and how do we want to do it? I I agree with the mayor, it doesn't, the way we're doing it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. And what if one of these other agencies, let's say PG or any of the others decides they don't want to. Make the investment in the infrastructure, then we have city employees who are working with substandard equipment. And um and also have substandard equipment that our city residents are depending on. It seems like it's something we all need to have a conversation about. And, you know, to some extent, it's also like, how committed are you? Because if you're committed to this partnership for the long term. The smart way to do it would be to have one purchasing agency. And for us to have an actuarial accounting of sort of what are the long-term. Infrastructure costs and then to embed that in the fees that our partners pay. That that to me is what would make sense, but I think we maybe need to have that conversation. So I think that's maybe separate from the decision we're making tonight. I understand that we're under something of a of a time crunch because costs are going to go up essentially in a month. So thank you very much, and chief, I wonder what your thoughts are in having perhaps a joint meeting of the various city councils.
Hey, thank you, Alan. Chief Gaudens, can you answer that for us?
No, I I think it would be a great idea, I think it's a it's. Very valuable to have that conversation on on the level of the council so that that you understand what the commitment is of of each of the partners. And it was uh when we first got into these agreements, it was a kumbaya moment of everybody feel good about doing a wonderful thing. And and everybody's going to save a ton of money and all of that, and now now we have many years of experience.
Yes.
And and it would be worthwhile to kind of reflect on what really came out of those years of experience and i- is it is it working well? And are there things that we need to do to to fine tune it and tweak it?
Yeah, that would be good, and when Carmel purchased its truck, did it go through? Our departments, all did it go through your analysis, your management team? So you could evaluate the need, or did they do it? How did, well, that's, let's put it this way, how did they decide when to buy the truck? What was their input? What was their process? Did it go in front of their council? Were you there and had the same discussion?
It it was essentially, yes, it was uh at my behest, we we had conversations about it leading up to it. And we have apparatus committee of of my personnel and we vetted. And they're actually buying essentially the same engines that Monterey bought, both Pacific Grove and Carmel were proposing. That Pacific Grove is still evaluating the idea of buying an electric engine, I don't think the technology is quite there yet, but they get to make that decision tomorrow night. And but if they do try to choose to go with the diesel, the conventional powered engine, the proposal is to buy one exactly like the ones that Monterey bought. Because that also helps with familiarity and training and fleet maintenance. Because our maintenance staff does a lot of the maintenance work on a separate con- through a separate contract on their vehicles, so it just makes it a lot easier.
Same parts, everything.
Exactly.
Um, good. So we'll go out to the public and then we'll bring it back to the council, anyone in the council chambers want to? Share any ideas? No, let's see, it looks like John Sovereign has his hand up, Clementine, is that right?
Looks like it, uh, let's call in him.
Go ahead. Gosh, uh, you guys are doing such a great job, I don't have anything to say except. You know, if I can get a fire truck for five thousand dollars, let me know. You will. A big one.
Wouldn't that be, what, don't people buy surplus tanks? Wouldn't that be a great commuter car?
Yeah.
Everybody would stay totally out of your way, because if I don't want to pay the gas bill. Was there any other public comment that we could see? I think John's getting. If not, we'll bring it back to the council for action, further discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any more discussion, council member Ed?
Yeah, just I think I heard the chief say that this council asks better questions than the other councils.
Very much so.
Yeah.
And and I'll say that tomorrow night, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to say that uh we we appreciate the the partnership across the peninsula. Because it it means a lot to uh unified command and training and responses. So uh kudos to other cities for making this work and thank you, chief, and your staff for all the work you do to. To make sure this is, this is a special department that has a special mission that a lot of communities can't do this. And I think there's a lot of value added, but I have value out of it and appreciate all the hard work that it takes to make this work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I personally would, I look, I would look for it, even though I obviously won't be here for in this seat, but I'll stay involved in the community. Be really interested to see what the report talks about with the contracts and going forwards. Yeah, seeing if you do are able to get a committee together and talk about the. The maybe one council member, subcommittee, as much as I don't like those. But to to help oversee the whole idea of do we buy common equipment and. Does it's within your jurisdiction, where is it needed, where is it used? I think there's a lot of opportunity, that's exciting opportunity going forward as you talk about it, and the al- alternative vehicle, that's going to be interesting. Though we're not running major fire trucks up via Guyuba, I always say hi and you're welcome, don't get me wrong, but. And so many of the calls are medical calls, you don't need a fire truck. Yeah. All right, so final comment, Tyler?
I just have a question on the point about PG's thought around the electric fire fire truck. Could you describe that more without going into too much detail, but I'm just wondering where you see that going in the future?
So right now, there's three manufacturers that manufacture electric fire trucks. The manufacturer we're purchasing from Pierce is one of them, they have a single engine in service, actually, they placed a second engine in service. There's one in Madison, Wisconsin, and one in Portland, Oregon. Rosenbauer, which is another, it's actually one of the largest manufacturers in the world, they're actually based out of Austria, but now have an American manufacturing facility. And they have one in service in Berlin and and the city of Los Angeles just put one in service. And they have one in service in Berlin and and the city of Los Angeles just put one in service. But these things have not been in service very long. Initially, my gut feeling is no way, and then after hearing the presentations, I was actually very impressed, so I I think that. The technology will get there, I think it's something that's definitely going to happen. The big question is, the first question we asked was, how long is the battery good for and what does it cost to replace it? And that that is a big question, we don't know yet on those things and so I think it's much better to let. A city like Los Angeles that can really put it through the wringer. Test it out and and let the technology get fine tuned and maybe in five years, I I would say the next time that. The Monterey City Council makes a purchasing decision for an engine, i- it might very well be something that that will work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bro call please.
Council member Albert. Council member Hoppa.
I.
Council member Williamson.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Hi.
And Mayor Roberson.
Hi, again, thank you for you and your team being here. And listening to all of the good input and so we appreciate that. And twenty four to thirty months, we'll celebrate. Now keep the current one running. As it further depreciates, John Sovereign might get it for three thousand.
Yeah, we'll we'll connect with John Sovereign, we definitely have an engine for him.
He's gonna park it on via Guyuba.
Well, he lives right above there. Oh, hey, I could make it into a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Okay, council, I know we have closed sessions, we'll want to keep moving, council comments.
I don't have any.
Okay, right.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Dan, please.
Last week, Monterey Salinas Transit celebrated their fifty years in service. If you remember the term, ride the bus with us, that was said a lot. It started as a Monterey Peninsula Transit Joint Powers Agency, one of the first. Then it moved to most of the county in eighty one. And then and then I would like to thank. Past boards for allowing us to have mass transit throughout the county. The last piece of the MST is we came up with our numbers for the free trolley this summer. Between June nineteenth and September fifth, we had. Seventy four thousand riders. And those are riders that go from downtown to. Canary Row, which obviously helps the Lighthouse Corridor, Traffic Corridor, so. Again, I I advocate for that free trolley because I think it really helps out our cities. Then on Saturday, I attended the Chinese Cultural Festival as a part of City of Monterey. And then Saturday night, I was at the Robinson Jeffers Plaque Celebration at Jeffers Plaza. Now, that's where Tor House Foundation funded two plaques at Jefferson or Jeffers Plaza at Monterey. Conference Center. I think we're very fortunate to have literary literary scholars like Robinson Jeffers describing word in words, a beautiful place that we live in. And then the last is, I know that council member Williamson and council member. Smith was at the the warf birthday of a hundred and seventy seven years. And that's it.
Good. Council member Alan?
Um, I've got no report right now.
Okay, thank you, and what I'll do is just update you, last night, we had the Monterey. Wensler Water Management District Meeting. I've got about maybe. One more meeting before the mayor select committee will appoint, I would assume another mayor from our six. Jurisdictions I suggested to the mayor's association, they rotate that seat. Keep it nonpolitical, keep it technical and and I think they're open to that. And so meanwhile, a couple of things happened, congratulations to the city of Monterey, which applied. For, they say Olivier Street, not Oliver Street. Stormwater diversion project. And basically what this is, the city's going to be collecting, as I recall, twenty five acre feet of stormwater, which now goes into the bay. It's going to be and untreated, it's going to be diverted into the sewer system. And will go into the pure Monterey project, so it. Will be coming potable water again, so I thought that was a really good project and. The water management district gave twenty five thousand dollar grant. Also, this is so interesting, the district submitted a request through the Office of State Senator John Laird. For immediate and long term drought relief. To add an additional ejection well. Into the seaside basin. And so four point eight million dollars was approved by the govern- governor. Who signed it and the Budget Act of twenty twenty two. So lest you think the check is in the mail and there's a Mercedes at every job, a garage and two chickens in every pot. So what? Happens now is this water staff submits an application to the State Water Resources and Control Board. Then after they go through, they approve it. And then we ultimately, the money will go to. The water district, so you would think it, oh, well, good, we've got, well, they have to go through that. Then finally, interestingly enough, the board reemphasized its ability. To require a permit from Cal M. Should it import or use decal water into the Cal M Water Distribution System? So the water district does have permit authority there. And you can imagine how Cal M, what they think of that. And so that's what we did last night. City managers report?
Uh, th- thank you, Mr. Mayor, I I just want to. Add to to the water management district that we are not in a drought year yet. Because the water management district calendar year hasn't started yet, the drought will start in October first.
Three is in a row, yeah.
Yeah, so we we ask for drought relief, even though the official data from the water management districts, we are not in a drought. The. Water issue and climate action issue will come in front of council next week. We will have a study session where we will talk about the Climate Action Plan.
Yeah.
And will with that also. Present to you what what the city has invested there and what we need to invest over the next. Decade or so. It will be a study session and it will start on Wednesday at four P M. The governor has declared that on February twenty eighth. The emergency measures pertaining to COVID will end and starting March first, his emergency authority will will. Be suspended. Last night, the County of Monterey issued a media release by the county administrator just. Saying that they will be in compliance with that and that this will give us sufficient and ample time to also. Demobilize all the various elements that the council has implemented so that we are. By two twenty eight in a different state, hopefully, and. County Health assured that they will continue monitoring the situation and will continue to. Have the priority of people in mind. A few other items of note of interest, we have installed new plague on equipment at Laguna Grande Park. And that was an NCIP project, we're grateful for the funding there, it's it's completed. And this weekend, Saturday, we will have a trunk or treat event. Organized by parks and it will be held here at City Hall. And the times for that can be found on on our website and press releases. And that's all from me.
All right, excellent. So we'll, before we adjourn, we'll see if there's anyone in the audience who wanted to talk about closed session items. No. And anyone online who wanted to talk about closed session, Clementine?
No answer raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, in that case, as always, we thank the public, our wonderful staff, my colleagues on the council for another stimulating meeting. We'll adjourn to closed session.